I don't know.
I don't either. I gotta get up. I gotta get my chair up.
Good afternoon. Today's Tuesday, February 22, 2022. The time is 12:01 PM, and we are gathered here for a briefing meeting. Before we begin, Sergeant at Arms, or whoever's acting as the Sergeant at Arms, okay, has the front lobby been attended to ensure public access? And are we ready to proceed with this meeting? Okay, thank you. Okay, today on the agenda, we have a statement of work from RSM auditors for 40 minutes, followed by two policy briefings, and then a presentation from academic services regarding challenge to instructional and/or media materials. So at this time, we'll begin, and I will turn it over to Mr. Dupree Bruno.
I'm gonna turn it over. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna turn it over to RSM. I believe that Clara Ewing and Matt Blondell are on the line. And if you could just go ahead and move forward with the presentation on the SOW, please.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? This is Clara Ewing.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. So this is Clara. I'm the Senior Director with RSM. Also dialed in is Jennifer Murtha, Partner, Matthew Blondell, Director, and Vice Campbell, Manager, all with RSM, whom you have all met. First, we'd like to say congratulations on the establishment of your audit committee, which is the best practice. We've had the pleasure of meeting and speaking with them already. We're here today to answer questions you may have on the SOW submitted to you on February 15 for internal audit services. On February 8, members of your audit committee spoke to you regarding the scope for information technology and cybersecurity assessment, risk assessment, and follow-up testing. The scope included in this SOW is in alignment to what was discussed on February 8 in our discussion with your audit committee on January 20. Fraud, waste, and abuse was subsequently included through communication with Attorney Dupree Bruno. We'd like to open it up to any questions that you have on the SOW.
Board members, does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the statement of work from RSM? Ms. Morgan.
It's not so much a question of RSM. And it's a question I addressed to the board attorney, and she responded with an email. And I'd like to understand better how it is that the information that's gathered for this cybersecurity piece is protected. I understand it's against the law to leak it, but we've had leaks from this board that are against the law. So can you give me a little bit better understanding of what the guardrails are? Please? Thank you.
So RSM will do the evaluation and do all of the analysis and assessment. Once they complete the report, it will be shared with the committee. The committee will go into an executive session to review that information. So that's pretty much the guardrails. At some point, if somebody does make a public records request for this information, there are statutory exemptions that will be utilized to advise the person that they do not have access to this based on the statute.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding the statement of work provided by RSM? Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Thank you, Clara, Matt, all of you. Really appreciate the hard work, and thank you for working with the audit committee as well. I guess my one question is, we have the statement of work, but we're still waiting on one process from you all? And I guess the...
Well, we received...
Speak on that, Mr. Dupree Bruno?
We received the service agreement on Thursday. They did make some changes, so we're processing those changes. And then probably there will be another response going back to RSM. So that's where we are on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gittens.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. And if you said this already, you can just say so. But the concern of the audit committee especially was timing and how quickly we can get moving. So my question is, once this is approved, how soon can we get moving or not moving, or where are we at time-wise?
So we received the master service agreement on Thursday. RSM did have some changes to that master service agreement. We're processing that information. So as soon as we finish those negotiations regarding the master service agreement, we'll be able to move forward.
And moving forward, does that mean that has the board collectively agreed that we are moving forward with RSM and this SOW?
That's a question that the board's gonna have to answer. I know, I don't know where the board stands in terms of this particular SOW that was presented. The master service agreement is not a, should not bar anything. I mean, the master service agreement is the actual document that hires RSM, but all of the details in terms of the work that they'll be doing, the costs associated with that work, that is in the SOW.
So can we move forward with the master services agreement and as the board collectively agree to use RSM and then work out the details of the SOW?
So the board can take a consensus now to determine whether or not they want to move forward with this particular SOW that was presented. And then, once we finalize that master service agreement, it will come to the board with the SOW at an action meeting, so you can take your formal vote on it.
So basically, then, if we do that today sometime, it can't come before an action meeting until a later time? Or can we do that, at least tentatively, vote to do business with RSM at a meeting tonight and then move forward with the details? So that, once the details are done, we're not waiting for another couple of weeks to have a meeting to approve it so they can get started?
So I would caution the board in terms of moving forward with a formal action without that master service agreement being finalized. Again, we just received it on Thursday, and there are changes by RSM in that document. So we need to process that, evaluate it, to make sure that it's in the board's best interest, and then we can move forward. Once that is approved by the board with the SOW, then RSM would be on board, and you will have your board auditor. But at this point, if the board wants to take a consensus just to say that, yes, we're tentatively based on the finalization of the MSA and the SOW, we're looking towards hiring RSM as the board auditor, let's move forward. I don't have any objection to that. If the formal action vote, you have to wait till the MSA is finalized.
So my question is, haven't we at a previous meeting taken a consensus that we wanted to ask, in fact, ask RSM to propose another statement of work with some questions about following up on previously issued audits? So, I mean, I think we crossed that bridge already. Maybe I'm wrong. But then, pending the memorandum?
The master service agreement.
The master service agreement. We should be ready to go.
Yes.
I mean, I thought that was, we were waiting on the audit committee, and then we got the statement of work, which is quite comprehensive. And so now, pending the master service agreement, I think we are ready to go. What are our options? I mean, we need to have an internal board auditor, and I thought we previously agreed that it was going to be RSM with their permission. So...
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you are correct. We have done that already. And we were waiting for the master service agreement to come, and of course, the audit committee to be put into place, and the RSM to have that conversation with them, which that has already taken place. So this is the last and final piece of that, for us to have that be brought before us, and for us to approve that and to move forward.
Okay, great. So then, should we then take a consensus?
On the SOW.
On the SOW pending the corrections?
And I don't know if the board has any corrections or anything else that they would like to add to the SOW, but I believe the next step is to take a consensus on the SOW so we can bring both of these documents to the board.
Okay.
And may I ask one more question, then?
Of course.
So on the master service agreement, you said it's pretty much done? Or is that what you said they made a correction to?
So the master service agreement came in on Thursday, and there are corrections that were made by RSM's counsel. So we need to review those corrections and determine whether or not they are also in the best interest of the board, and then we can bring that forward, you know, back and forth a little bit negotiations, if there are things that we think are concerning.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at? I mean, are they major changes, or?
There are significant changes to the contract. So the MSA was sent to RSM. It's been a little bit since it was sent to RSM, and we received the corrections last Thursday. And there are some, there are significant corrections in that MSA, so we do need to process that.
So our next, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So our next meeting is, or action meeting is the 8th. So virtually, we, I mean, we could have this taken care of by the 8th, which is our next meeting.
I'm sure we will have this resolved by the 8th.
And can we then, in the, I'm sorry, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So if we have it done by the 8th, can we have at least a plan in place and a time certain for them to just hit the ground running to begin their services as closely to the 8th as possible?
I mean, if the board is going to approve the SOW and the master service agreement, technically, the next day, they can begin their process.
Okay. And RSM is on the line. Are they amenable to that?
I was just gonna ask if they had anything to add or anything that they wanted to share with the board.
Good afternoon, and this is Matt Blondell with RSM. No, I, you know, in the statement of work, we've included estimated start dates of March 2022 for the cybersecurity assessment, and, you know, sometime between March and April for the risk assessment and follow-up. And I think, you know, we're, we're, of course, still within that timeline. So if, if by the 8th, everything is finalized, we would certainly be able to start in March.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, then at this time, we'll take a consensus on the statement of work if there are no objections or any changes. Okay, so I see, Ms. Jevonelli?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have a unanimous agreement that we will move forward with the statement of work. And then, Mr. Dupree Bruno, you'll work with RSM on the master service agreement, and we'll be bringing it back for the March 8th.
Yes, ma'am.
Action meeting. Okay. Any other comments or statements from RSM representatives?
No, just happy to be with you all again.
Thank you very much. I'm happy, too. And we need to get this show on the road. So it looks like we're finally moving in the right direction. So thank you very much for being with us this afternoon and for providing a comprehensive statement of work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. So then, anything else on that, Mr. Dupree Bruno?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So that, we're ahead of schedule, for sure. Okay. Next is policy 4.222, Mental Health and Well-Being. This is the first reading. And at this time, I will introduce Lori Brooks and Mr. Dupree Bruno, our school board attorney.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Okay.
There was an opportunity already for the board to take a look at this policy. This is in a pre-brief. This is the official first reading, so we can move it forward in our rulemaking process. I think that everyone has had an opportunity to review it. If you have any questions, please ask. And Benny, if you could put 4.222 on the screen, please.
And we have it in our backup material. So then, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I have, not about the policy specifically, but about, sort of about process. Section 4, starting on line 112, "All school-based employees shall be trained." I did the policy council meeting for Head Start last week. And one of the things they did that's new is they're providing education to parents about how to intervene in children's behavior and the levels of intervention. And so when I read this, I wonder, is there a way? I know we can't train parents, but we're giving information to staff. Is there a way that we can provide, you know, references to families, that kind of thing? That's my first question. Then my second one is, section 9, starting on page, or line 212. I didn't understand the paragraph. And then, section 10...
I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan, what was that number, please?
That was line, starting on line 212, post-vention. I didn't understand the paragraph. And then, line 221, "Reporting requirement." It says, "The superintendent shall report the number of involuntary examinations, et cetera, to the Florida Department of Education on annual basis." I think it should also say that needs to be shared with the board and in a historical context. Those are my comments.
And I'll ask Ms. Brooks to respond to that because I think there are some things involving parents that are in the works with our mental health department. So I'll let her address that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon. We have been offering Wellness Wednesday events for parents via Zoom monthly, and it mirrors the same Wellness Wednesday date that our secondary students experience once per month. And in March, on March 2nd, will be our Second Annual Suicide Prevention for Parents Education Event to really help them identify signs to look for, and then also effective ways to approach their child or any individual, intercede, and then also resources if they feel they need additional steps to be taken, especially while their child is in their care, such as mobile crisis and counseling resources, et cetera.
Morgan?
Yeah, so is that available online year-round? Or do parents have to? Okay, so when you go to the website, a parent wants to know, what should I look for in a child who's potentially suicidal? Where do they go on the website?
So we have our recordings for our Wellness Wednesday events posted on our district YouTube channel. And we also have on the Mental Health and Wellness Portal on leeschools.net, we have resources for parents and signs and symptoms and actions they can take on that Mental Health and Wellness Portal under suicide prevention.
Okay, thank you. Shame on me for not remembering that.
Ms. Jordan?
Because we have a lot on there.
I have a question regarding that. So for, in reference to what Ms. Morgan had stated. So we have that on the Mental Health Portal. But if this were to take, and I would like to see that if this were to take place to some child, that the parents would be given something to say, this is where you need to, how you can follow up, this is what you need to do, versus us saying, or assuming they're gonna go look at our portal or a YouTube station, because their mind is not even there because they're concerned about what the heck is happening to their kids. So to me, it's, that would behoove us to make sure that they have something in their hand on what the next steps are. But I will have more questions. I just wanted to follow up on that one. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Just to go to number 9 and number 10. I think I understand number 10, but number 9, which is on the line 210 that Ms. Morgan raised, post-vention, that is a term of art. And I'm asking Ms. Brooks to explain that a little bit, please.
Thank you. So with many of our functions related to student mental and emotional wellness or individual wellness, we have prevention, intervention, and post-vention. And so if a student is considered as having suicidal ideation, and we are interceding, post-vention is either after the parent has come to the school and we've provided them with resources and support, or if a student has experienced an involuntary hospitalization, whether at school or outside of school, when the student returns to school, those post-vention pieces include information, again, for the parents, but also a support plan for their hours at school. So those would be the post-vention pieces. After a student has experienced suicidal ideation at any level or during, what happens after that to support them and ensure that we are hopefully not in this situation for them again, and they have access to supports and resources if they feel like they need to tap into that earlier on than actually putting potentially their safety at risk?
Thank you for that, Ms. Brooks. Ms. Gittens?
So in the post-vention, I'm trying to get at where the parental involvement comes in. So if a student has these issues, the plan, the overall plan includes pre, during, and post-vention, and the parents, basically, for lack of a better term, sign off on the whole process all the way through post-vention?
Yes, so in the intervention phase, as a student may present with suicidal ideation at school, we call the parent guardian or emergency contact early on in the process because we want them to be involved in that. When that process is followed as written, the parent guardian is contacted very early on because we want them to be part of the conversation. They need to be part of that conversation. And then with the post-vention, which is the support plan to support the child at school, the parent is invited into that process, along with the student, to help us understand what may help the student. It could be that they need to be able to see their counselor when they feel like they just need to have a minute, or they need a timeout. And we want to make sure we have plans in place that increases their access, kind of on demand, during the school day.
The issue that comes to mind for me is when you can't get that parental involvement because of cultural or whatever circumstances, and they feel there is nothing wrong. How do you deal with that moving forward without that parental piece?
That's an excellent question. And that really highlights the power of the school mental health team as teaming with school counselors, social workers, school psychologists, and our licensed mental health professionals. Because typically, the person who knows the student best is going to be meeting with the student and their parent or guardian to discuss these items. As, if we struggle with parental involvement, typically, that's multiple outreaches. We'll still do a support plan the best we can for school hours to have the student identify for us how to help them stay safe and also support their emotional well-being. We progressively move through members of the team, however, if we're unable to obtain solid contact with the parent and a commitment even for the school support. And that will escalate up to our licensed mental health professionals because frequently, they can talk to the parent at a licensed level and really help them with another layer of information. We don't always get to yes, but eventually, in a lot of cases, we do. And then at that point, of course, we do no mental health services without consent. This is more of a safety piece where the support plan is required when a student returns to school after having a concern for suicidal ideation because, of course, we have to make sure they're safe at school.
So it is a requirement that when they return, that this has, something has to be in place?
Yes, the support plan has to be done, ideally with the parent guardian and student, but sometimes with just the student because during school hours, at least, we can assist them if they feel like they need access, you know, the quiet corner of the room, whatever it is that they need that will help them. We want to make sure we're providing that during school.
Okay, I will continue the conversation with you because I see where with parental rights information that we could get into some sticky situations from time to time. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions or comments? Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I have a lot.
Okay.
And I, this is really like dear and near to my heart. So I took the time and I read through this multiple, multiple times. I've had multiple conversations. And thank you, Ms. Gittens, for that comment as well because there is a problem when the parents do not know that there is that conversation to happen before their kids go back to school. And reaching those parents and making sure that they are aware that the kids are not out a week before they even know that they, hey, I was supposed to go back to school because it's not stated. But, and I, and I have the process. We have a process document that everybody's supposed to adhere to. And that's the thing, too. If the process is followed as written, it works. And I just want to say this, too. This has nothing to do with Ms. Brooks. I love Ms. Brooks. She's a wonderful person, has so much knowledge. But I just think that we have to make sure that the system is not broken, and whatever it is that we need to do to fix it, we need to fix it. But if we have a process document, and it's supposed to be followed, and it's not being followed, that is a problem to me. And we need to make sure that that is, that is being taken care of. We know we have a mobile crisis team that is supposed to come out if this, if the need arises. But then again, we have this time issue. So if it's at the end of the day of school, guess what? We're not calling them. We're gonna make a decision on who, what's gonna happen to this child. So we're just gonna call the SRO, who's then gonna call their superior, who's not there. And of course, they don't want the responsibility. So they're gonna say, do what you gotta do. So we have failed our student. So now we have the problem of, and I spoke with Ms. Brooks at length regarding this as well. So nothing in here states about at the end of the day, but if this child is there at the end of the day and they're at aftercare, that's not the end of their day. They're there till 6 o'clock at night, or whenever that parent gets them. So we have adequate time to, you, one, they should know where that child's gonna go. Is that child in aftercare? Are they staying there? Do we have adequate time to get this team? And if we cannot get this mobile team, I'm sorry. And if we cannot get this mobile team, I'm sorry. I feel as a district, and with us having all these children under our care, we need to create our own mobile unit. So that way, under any circumstances, we always have the ability to make sure that these kids are taken care of. And if it's our mental license, is that what they are called, Ms.?
Yes, LMHPs for short, Licensed Mental Health Professionals.
Thank you. So if we could create our own team here, that would put us in a situation that not one person is ever going to make a decision based on a child's, what they believe, because I'm sorry, we ourselves may be having a bad day, so we're going to look at this kid and go, okay, I'm sorry, I'm tired, I have to go home. I'm not saying this, that this happens, so I'm not trying to disrespect anybody, but I'm just looking at the situation and what does take place in our children's lives. And we have to make sure that we are really, really doing everything in our power. So we have funds, SRO funds, we have all these different funds for whatever, and I just believe that we need to make sure that if that is something that we can put together here as a district, and have our own team of, you know, professionals, that if the mobile, I'm sorry, I know I'm rattling right now, if the mobile crisis team that we have, that we're supposed to call cannot be there, we need to have our own mental health, mobile crisis team that have the licensed clinicians. Am I right on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Because I was taking lots of notes when I was speaking. But I just think that we have to do that regardless of the time, make sure that those kids are there. We need to make sure that everybody has to take, is required to do this, that they understand everything, that they, that they are taught by the professionals, not by an online class. I'm sorry, I, because we can go through that, we do that for a lot of our classes, we skim through it. But if someone's really there, and we sign off that, yes, we were there, we, we attended, we understand, we sign off, and that goes in their file, there's no miss, you know, there's no confusion on, yes, we do already understand what we're supposed to do, we understand the process, we understand we're supposed to contact an administrator. And I was like, who is that administrator? It doesn't say who that is. So based on this, the principal on line 84, reasonable attempts, that's another thing, reasonable attempts. If you're calling people, reasonable attempt, you're trying to reach out to the people, but the number you're giving them is a number that does not work, that is not a reasonable attempt. We have to make sure that if we are giving somebody a number to call back, that that number is a number that somebody's going to answer on the other end, not a school number where that phone, we know, is going to night, and nobody's going to answer the phone. It'll just ring. I'm sorry, that's on us. We need to make sure that that is corrected. And, I'm so sorry, just a couple more things.
Go ahead.
And then when I see, that's part of the reasonable attempt on 84, and then it says that the designee and care by the principal or principals designee, which I, I wanted to know, who is that? Who is that person? So if that principal's not there in that building, who is that person? So that should be a, a assistant principal is what I was told. But, and then there's a minimum of times, a minimum amount of times that they're supposed to try to reach you. But then again, we have those times where parents are not able to be reached. But it's, it just irks me to know, and when I know that they're giving you a number, and it's, they know nobody's going to answer that number, that just, I can't even tell you what that does to me. Sorry, let's see. Leaving the message. So I guess, Ms. Brooks, I would ask you, is that something that, and Dr. Savage, is that something that we could do here in our district, is to have our own, our own in-house mobile team that would be available if those other people are not available, to make sure that our children never have to go through, you know, a situation without having other people there to access, and not having it just be given to a SRO or police to just make that phone call and make a decision for these kids? Because I don't understand, I don't know what their, as an SRO, I'm not taking anything away from them either. I don't know what their mental health training is. I have no idea what that is. And I just need to, I believe that we owe that to our children.
I'll defer first to Ms. Brooks to answer best your knowledge of that question.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. We have been reviewing the opportunity to create our own district mobile crisis team to be secondary to the Circuit 20 mobile crisis team. We have been working with the CPE mobile crisis team. We talk about how many teams they have, and then how many teams are deployed, and how many diversions we have, because they're unable to report to our schools. So the schools are required to call them, even if the end of the day is imminent. That was new under 590 this year. And so they are now calling them, even if it's like five minutes before the bell, they are required. Sometimes, you never know, they might be right around the corner. However, because we really have been kind of convicted of the need for this team, and it's been worrisome, our school resource officers, as you say, Ms. Jordan, it's not to take anything away from them, but I, you know, to be a mental health professional doing a one to two hour deeper clinical assessment before determining if someone needs to be involuntarily hospitalized, is much different than being a law enforcement officer having to walk into that situation. So I think there's support from all stakeholders for that additional team. What we're looking at now is the mental health allocation is slated to have an increase. I've been talking with our bureau chief at the DOE of Student Support Services, and we are to experience an increase if all goes as planned. And what we would like to look at, of course, pending the district process for approval, is adding our own licensed mental health professionals to be that secondary team. So we've run through then two layers of clinical opportunity, mobile crisis through Circuit 20 and CPE, our own mobile crisis team, before we would then have to ask a school resource officer. And only the principal can go down that path even now, to involve the school resource officer if mobile crisis can't get there. Everything in 590 puts principals or their administrative designees, so therefore assistant principal, if the principal's not on campus, in kind of the care, custody, and control of the situation. But we, we are looking at developing a district team.
Just to piggyback on that, we literally, Ms. Brooks and I had this conversation within the last two to three weeks, so I knew it was in the forefront of the conversation. The second piece that has always been of a concern to me is, when you have the schools out there, there's a lot of discretion, whether it's the leader, the level of experience, the bias, even among school counselors. There's just a dramatic array of services that our counselors provide, and so some of them, you know, they vary wildly. And then when your SROs are brought into it, while they do have standardized training requirements, no two SROs are exactly the same. So having a highly qualified team of individuals at the district level, that really is that additional layer for us of inherent quality control, of the best expertise you possibly can do, it just adds such tremendous value for us to have that assurance that we're really deploying these processes. And as Ms. Brooks said, this is not a new issue, but it's really been highlighted throughout the pandemic. The other thing I wanted to mention, just to answer to some of Ms. Jordan's earlier concerns, just about information, and one of the things, not just for this, but for all other issues, the partnership we have with families is so significant, and one of the ways that that partnership can be at its best, is when we all have accurate information, contact information. So we've really made lots of efforts to try to ensure that parents have the easiest way to update. They have numbers that change, all manner of things. That's part of why we've moved towards capturing that information digitally wherever possible, since so many people have personal cell phones, such an opportunity to do it. That's just one of the most essential things that we do, is maintain current information for all of our families. In the old days, you know, you'd have numbers that were maybe six years old, and so I remember we, we were calling, it was very, very difficult. And that's why the emergency forms that we do try to collect, why it's so important, but it's, that's just an ongoing body of effort that we have. And I don't know that Ms. Brooks can speak to all that, because that is individual schools. We work on it also through our information systems work that we do. There's just a lot of work to go on that effort. But thank you for, for highlighting the concern over that particular piece. Ms. Brooks, is there anything else that I mentioned, that I failed to mention on that?
No, that was, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, because, may I? Okay, so, because my, my other problem is that when we do have the SROs, and it's written here in, well, 590, that just happened, correct? When was, when did that just happen, Ms. Brooks?
It was for this school year, and we had to delay some of our training due to the large COVID outages. And so our training was deployed later in the fall, and it took effect immediately in the schools.
So we, that just took place this year, and yet, some of that still has not been followed. So I think we need to make sure that we have the correct people training, as like Ms. Brooks and her team, training the, the schools to make sure that they are all understanding what the, what 590 does state. And then also on, here you have, as part of this, 156, and it speaks on the, the mobile, the crisis unit, it speaks about the resource officers, again, that they must have a consultation with a supervisor. So if, once we've opened that door for the SRO to come in, they must now have a consultation with their supervisor, who is nowhere in that building, has no idea what this child is going through. But based on the fact that they're absolutely not wanting a lawsuit, they're going to always err to the side of caution and say, okay, take the kid. So there, I doubt very much that they would ever say not to take the child, but you're having a consultation with a person who's not even in the building, who's not aware of everything that's going on. Based on those five, was it five questions or six questions from the Columbia?
Columbia.
Which is, yeah, I did get the opportunity to read that, Ms. Jevon Ely. So I just think that there's a lot of stuff that's in here, that we need to make sure that we are following this to the T, and that we are making sure that, that the postvention, that we do have that support plan in place as soon as that child is coming out. Because again, even with our partnerships with, with them, I have a problem with that. We, we cannot take a child there, have a child, we always tell these kids to trust an adult. Is there an adult in the school that you trust? And they trust that individual person for them to get in the car with them, drive them there, knock on the door, hand them over, and that's it. That is terrible. I'm sorry. What did, what did we just do to that child? And we just have to have some kind of better way of, of making that happen.
Thank you. So, Ms. Jevon Ely?
So I just have a couple of questions. The list of phone numbers, there has to be, I know there's like secondary, and there's not just one number, so you can't be limited to that. I mean, we had another situation just recently at a school where, and this is off, off mental health, but still it's not, it's where a student was out sick, or went home sick, and was sent back, the mother works nights, and went to sleep and put, went to send her child to school the next day with a note from the doctor, saying they didn't have COVID, and they were, that child was put, sent to the clinic and stayed there through breakfast and lunch with no food and very little contact until afternoon. How does that happen? That, that, for me, Dr. Savage, that's too much discretion at the school level when you have things like that happening. And so to me, there's no, with discretion, there's no, there's no leniency when it comes to a student, I mean, and a parent, and making sure parents are contacted. I mean, they didn't call the second numbers, so that child sat in the clinic all day long, not learning, and we have a duty to educate all students. So therefore, that child was a whole day wasted in the clinic, and he was well, and should have been in class. And nobody, they left him alone. I, I'm assuming, or no one checked on him if, if he didn't have breakfast and, and lunch. So there's no room for discretion area in, at school levels. It's a requirement when it, when it comes to safety and the mental health and mental well-being of a student. And so that's my concern, is, you know, we need to make sure that the numbers are being called, the secondary numbers, and getting hold of the parent. The parent is a, it's a, that's a huge piece that, to me, there's, that's a loophole, or that's something that somebody's not doing their job, and, or the training wasn't adequate. And so that, therefore, that falls back on us as a board, you know, what are we doing to hold people accountable for the job that they're, they were hired to do? And that's taking care of students, because at the end of the day, that's our customer, that's our client, and that's who we need to be focused on, not, it's five o'clock and it's time to go home. I don't care if it's a Friday at five o'clock. And I love the mental, I love having a mobile crisis team at this district level. And I mean, I think that, I would like to know what other districts do, you know, these high-performing districts, do they have that? That would be the questions I have for you on that, and who, you know, what, what does that look like? What exactly would that entail? Thank you.
In answer to that question, some of our size-alike districts do have their own mobile crisis team. Many have not had them in the past, and every year that the mental health allocation has been in force now, and I believe we're in year four, we see another district or two or three adding that. For instance, Pinellas County has had one for years, and we have been working largely with their director, my counterpart there, on asking those questions and having a lot of conversation around that. Collier County has their own. And so we are really, and I know Collier is smaller than us, however, we're looking for best practices around the state, and also how the mental health allocation has been utilized to support that service. So many of our size-alikes are growing in that direction, some have them. We, our opinion and our feedback based on data and implementation, and 590 really, has helped school districts develop tighter processes, because even though we followed best practices, now it's statutorily required. And personally, with mental health, I like to live there as far as student safety. And so that really gave us a perfect opportunity as a district to talk about how could we do things with more layers because of mobile crisis, providing a great service to our students and our families in this district. When they run out of teams, because too many are out in the community and at schools, that's when we have that deficit and we could fill in.
Okay, thank you so much for that. And real quick, so that Ms. Patrica can have a chance, we know mental health is not going away. We know it, it's increased with the pandemic, but it was still in our forefront before that. If we look at what happens with adults, and, you know, what's happening in the, the world today, there's, there's so much. So if we can try to head it off early and at least recognize it in, in students early on, where they can get the assistance and the help and the understanding that it's okay if you don't, if your day's not a good day, you know, we have bad days, you know, just like bad hair days. So, I mean, and make it, you know, that it's, it's just a natural thing, and not, and that we talk about it more, because it's been such a conversation that no one wants to have, because no one wants that, that stigma on their family or them. But it's, it's a fact, and if we, if we acknowledge it, and that empowers us to be able to, to help children succeed and grow. So I, I think if we can, if we can really get a really good grasp on it at, at the school level, it will only help the future of our, of our community and, and the outcome of later. So I, I would support anything we can to do to help people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
I just have a question, and it's probably for the board attorney to weigh in as time goes on, but potential for increased liability if we have our own mobile mental health unit. We're not doing it now, so the liability's not on us. What does that mean in terms of additional expense? And not now, just as this unfolds? Please and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Kind of circling back around when I asked before about, you know, the parents' rights and, and all of that, and this, since this is our first reading of this, correct? So can we somehow be proactive? And perhaps it means a companion document for parents? And as I was looking through, like focusing on the involuntary examination in 3, 2, 6A and B, C1, 7A, and 11, are things that might affect that situation? And, and I just know that, that now people are, with the Parents' Bill of Rights out there, that we could run into some situations that would, you know, cause that conflict. So perhaps some type of education piece or companion piece, saying to parents, this is what we're statutorily required to do. is what we're statutorily required to do, without them having to read through this whole document. And maybe it's something in Parent University, or something that they can put out at the schools and give to parents when they give out at the beginning of the year, but so that they know. And that way, we would be more proactive than reactive to some situations. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I just have a couple of things. Knowing that we have now a policy in the works, and we have the process document, I wonder about the staff training. Is it mandatory for all people at every school? Or is it optional? And I know that there could be liability with our own mobile crisis team, but they could respond to different locations and not necessarily transport a child. We have an inordinate numbers of involuntary hospitalizations of children. So I think if the crisis team and the mental health team at the school had the ability to intervene more and do a little bit of a better job, that we may have less of those. Some families live in crisis, you know, so it's not just about a bad day, it's about, you know, life sucks right now, so how am I going to focus on my schoolwork? But I was just wondering, when we have the receiving agency, our partner agencies, where the services are provided, what's the MOU with them? I mean, we have our process document, we have our policy. What about what happens once the child is delivered to the door of the receiving facility? How do we assure, since we're kind of responsible, how do we assure that what's happening there is in accordance with our own process document and policy?
That's a very good question. And the statute that defines the Baker Act, unfortunately, is kind of the, it's the, I don't know how to say this, but it's unfortunate that schools live within that statute, and that we are placed in a position of, we want to keep our kids safe, I don't want that to be taken the wrong way, but we have to take action and call in the agencies that can take action, that are charged with the ability to place an individual under an involuntary hospitalization via the Baker Act. So while we're kind of a conduit for asking agencies and parents in during that, yes, if we have our own mobile crisis team with our own licensed staff, they're going to also be doing that work, and they have to do it under their licensure, under the Department of Health. Now, similar to the mobile crisis team, our clinical team would always be focusing on verbal de-escalation and connection to services, with a last resort being the potential of an individual being placed under a Baker Act. And when you spend time with an individual, and you're engaging in that clinical assessment, you have a much higher opportunity, or a much better opportunity, to achieve that de-escalation and release to the parent or guardian with connection to services in place. So having said that, regardless of whomever in statute, under the Baker Act statute, is charged with this responsibility, the transportation is always done by law enforcement. So that, I just wanted to be clear on that, that regardless, but the mobile crisis teams prepare the student and the parent guardian for what will happen when that transport takes place. To your point, Ms. Fisher, about the crisis stabilization units or the receiving facilities, we could attempt to strengthen our MOU on that end. Our MOU right now with the agency that has a CSU is more related to counseling services. We don't have an MOU with them as a receiving facility, because by law, the law enforcement agents have to take them there. It's our only CSU in Lee County. We certainly can engage in conversation with them. It would be more of an ask for consideration of how CSU's intake and process individuals as a whole, but we can ask related to minors and make those requests of them, that we have some additional trauma-sensitive pieces in place, and also with parents and guardians, what does that look like?
Yeah, and I think that would be important, because the Baker Act really is designed for adults, but when children are involved, sometimes they're further traumatized by what happens. So I think that that's what Ms. Jordan is saying, that we want to try to prevent that happening in the future. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Anything else?
I thank you for the opportunity, Attorney Dupree Bruno. I thank you also for including me in this briefing and the policy development. And these are tough questions that need to be asked around what I think is the highest standard of care for our children, and we are committed to doing this in a trauma-sensitive way, and really with the utmost respect. And I am very grateful for 590 being in effect now, because it really provides stronger guardrails for us to continue to improve in this area. So thank you for the questions and comments.
Thank you.
Just wanted to thank Ms. Brooks again. It's always a privilege to have someone who's so passionate and knowledgeable about this particular area address us and answer all of our questions. The other thing, I just wanted to highlight the two districts that she mentioned. Pinellas is very proactive in this space. Part of their work, when they started doing school turnaround, the transformation zones, was they understood the issues that came with high areas of generational poverty. So part of their robust development went in the areas of early education, as well as in the mental health space. And so they've seen tremendous improvement, and I think there's a lot we can learn from a district like Pinellas in that effort. And also, when I, one of the first things I did when I was in this role was I reached out to the state of Florida, my counterpart at the top, the chancellor, and asked him who's really the best in this area, knowing that this is such an opportunity. And he said, well, you know, Collier is definitely up there as well. So the fact that we have a neighbor to the south that really has a very nice partnership in this effort as well, because that's part of it, is you nailed. It's not just what we do, it's what our partners do. They have a very, very powerful partner in this work as well. So just wanted to continue to highlight that, and thank you, Ms. Brooks, because we're very lucky to have Ms. Brooks as well.
Yes, we are. Thank you. Okay.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes. So just one question that did come up, I wanted to just clarify in the policy, which is 3H. It talks about non-disabled minors, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear. What they're really talking about is emancipation. They're using a very archaic legal language, that's what's in the statute, but it really means emancipated minor. So at this time, I would like to have consensus to move the policy forward.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so just one comment. I realize that we're using professional labels. I think it would be helpful to put in parentheses what some of these things mean, just for readability and better understanding. Postvention is really about student support, after, you know, whatever.
Okay, thank you. So go ahead, Ms. Dupree Bruno.
Wanted to have a consensus on moving this policy forward with the change to subsection nine, which is the, we'll put a little parentheses there explaining postvention, as well as 10, where the report will be shared with the board. We can bring this to a public hearing.
Okay, then, do we have consensus on moving this policy forward with those changes that Mr. Dupree Bruno just mentioned? So, Ms. Jordan, are you?
I still have an issue with this, because, I'll live with it. I'll live with it.
Yes. What is it that isn't addressed that you need?
Well, I think that we need to put on here about the phone that has to be put on here, that it has to be, they have to, because it gives us a phone to call back, but we need to make sure that it's an active phone. We need to put that on here, so, because otherwise, they could just say, I called, I've called, I left a message, and I'm giving you a dead phone to call. So that means that they met all the, everything that's on here, but have you? Because you just gave me a number that I cannot reach anybody.
So with regards to that section, Ms. Jordan, so when we're looking at reasonable attempt, and you look at section I, starting with line 90, it goes into a little bit more detail in terms of what that means. You have to contact a parent or guardian, or you can contact another emergency contact. It specifies how to contact the individuals. And then section two, which starts at line 97, says that you must document the method and the number of attempts made to contact that parent or guardian, or other emergency contact, and the outcome of each attempt. So it has to be documented, that's specifically required at this point.
And I've read that multiple times, but again, you can tell me you're texting me or you're calling me, and you're leaving me a number that does not work, that still doesn't get it. So I contacted Debbie four times by text, three times by email, four times by this, but the phone number that you're giving me to call you back on that message is a phone that's, no one's going to answer. So it has to be a live phone, a way that people can call you back. It doesn't do me any good if you're calling me and giving me a number that nobody's going to answer. So how does one get, how do I contact you when you have not given me the tools to do that?
And may I just say, yeah, because if you call a school after a certain point, you get no one.
It's dead. So the contact person regarding the specific case of this specific child needs to be a live number.
Yes.
Perhaps the school counselor's cell phone number, or the principal's cell phone number. I mean, that, so that when the parent calls back and says, what's going on with my child, then they get somebody and they can get an answer.
Ms. Brooks actually may have some comments to make on this.
And I would propose, if it's amenable to the board, that potentially, we would add that into the process document, because as schools vet the situation, that process is highly prescriptive. It tells them exactly what they need to do. And I would like to add, students that are in the after-school program to the process document, that we make sure, we ask if they're staying, and we act based on that extended day. And then also, that we place in there that a working number should be provided. We have district-issued cell phones that can be used. If there's a concern that the switchboard will be closed, we need to provide potentially the school, like the cell number to the administrator in charge, et cetera, in the process itself. Because that one, that process document is malleable, and we can add more to it and take away as needed, based on situational pieces such as this. Those are two things that I wrote down to add as we move forward to the actual process.
I would agree. I think that is more of a process issue than a policy issue.
Okay, but I just want to make sure, though, is that if it's in the process, how are they held accountable for not following the process? So there has to be something in here that's saying that if you do not, we've trained you, you've signed off, our licensed practice medical professionals have trained us, we understand this, we've signed off, we understand the process, we understand this, and now if we failed this child, somebody's going to be accountable for that. And so I think we have to do that. We have to have a CYA, I'm sorry. And even with the police, when they're, the SROs, when they're contacting for verification, you're contacting a person that is nowhere around you to have that communication. So now you have two eyes on a child, okay? One person's here, and then you bring in this other person, now you just determine what's happening to that child. Because the person on the phone has no idea what is taking place. They're not there, they're just hearing what you are saying. So now I have, I have control of that narrative, and I am so sorry, I'm really, really, really passionate about this, but it gives me the narrative, the person in the school, I have the right to say whatever or come up with whatever, and I just think we need those more eyes. So that's where our mobile crisis, and we need to keep our money, leave the money alone that's in mental health, leave that, let it stay there. But even if they were the other eyes that came in there and looked at it, not to, because you cannot take them anywhere, but we need that, and I think that needs to be in here. So we're making a policy, we need to make it right.
And I want to thank you, Mrs. Jordan, for bringing this, these details up, because, you know, I've heard this story multiple times over the years, and, you know, from different parents who didn't have the wherewithal or the forum to bring it to everyone's attention. So I think this is only going to enhance and improve our process. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Ms. Fisher, what are we doing on this particular policy?
We need to take the consensus to move forward.
We did take a consensus, and Ms. Jordan said she could live with it, and I think that Ms. Brooks just said that it really is more part of the process document for those specific changes than it is the policy. Because there is a difference.
Thank you.
So is that okay? So it's 6-0.
Thank you.
Okay. And then next is policy 1.181, emergency requirement for protective gear, and this is also a first reading. And Ms. Dupree Bruno?
Actually, we're just trying to move forward with removing this policy pursuant to the new statute, Florida Statute 1002.20, subsection 3N, does not allow us to have this policy at this point, so we're just going through the process to remove it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from board members? So shall we have consensus? Oh, Ms. Jevon Elling?
Just real quick, I didn't support this when it happened. I was one that did not vote for this, so I am very supportive of it being removed. Thank you.
Okay.
I never felt that the superintendent should have this power and relieve the board of this power. So I am glad we're getting that power back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, consensus to move forward with removing this emergency policy. Okay, unanimous.
Thank you.
We are going to take a break at 2 o'clock for technical reasons, but in the meantime, we have challenge to instructional and/or media materials. Academic Services, Dr. Spiro, Christine Schrod, staff attorney, Dr. Bethany Quisenberry, Ms. Lori Houchen, and Mrs. Candace Alvedo. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Today's topic on the process for challenging instructional and/or media materials is about laws, policies, and processes that guide our work. There is not one individual making the decisions. Various stakeholders who follow a process that is driven by current board policy and legislation are involved in this process. Today speaking is Christine Schrod, who will go over legislative, pertinent legislation. Candace Alvedo will review the actual process, and Dr. Bethany Quisenberry will share parental resources available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Can you hear me?
No.
Okay, is this better? Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. We are here to give a brief overview on the relevant Florida state statutes that guide our processes and procedures with regard to book challenges. As you can see from this slide, we have listed the pertinent statutes in play here, and if you click on the orange writing, you will see a hyperlink to the full statute, because we are going to be just kind of summarizing everything for you here. So let's start out with Florida Statute 1006.28. It's our early learning statute. This just indicates that each school board has the constitutional duty to select and provide adequate instructional materials for our classrooms. That includes any materials that students can access in our libraries. However, we must adopt a policy for parents or residents or interested community members to object to any use of material that they find not appropriate. So when we look at what is appropriate in adopting instructional materials, they must be obviously free of pornography, and there is a reference to Florida statute 847.012. Now, this is a criminal statute that defines obscene materials and distribution of pornographic materials to minors. It also has to be suited to the student needs and appropriate for their grade and age level. So these are all of the things that we look at when we're adopting materials for instruction or in our supplemental materials, such as library materials. Again, the statute provides for a process that we must provide for public review, public comment, and adoption of instructional materials, which, as you'll see in our presentation, is clearly outlined in our Board Policy 2.18. Now, when you're looking at what Florida Legislature has defined as harmful materials, we go through kind of the criminal element of 847, and that is that no adult is able to sell to a minor, or rent or loan for monetary consideration, any of the materials listed on this slide. I'm not going to go through each one of them, but obviously, this would be characterized as obscene material. The part of this statute that would be pertinent to school districts is on the following slide, and indicates that an adult may not knowingly distribute to a minor on school property any of the materials that was, that were described on the previous slide. However, it is very important to note that this subsection does not apply to the distribution or posting of school-approved instructional materials, that by design serve as a major tool for assisting in the instruction of a subject or course by school officers, instructional personnel, administrative personnel, school volunteers, educational support employees, or managers. It does, the statute itself contemplates a person coming onto school property and selling these materials to minors. It is being used at this moment to try to have criminal charges brought against school districts for obscene material, which is why we're going into the next slide. And we're going to define what that would look like, even if it did apply in the school setting of approved instructional materials. So under Florida statute 847.001, harmful to minors means any reproduction, imitation, characterization, description, exhibition, presentation, or representation of whatever kind or form depicting nudity, sexual conduct, or sexual excitement when it, and now this is our three-part test that we're always looking at, it predominantly appeals to a prurient, shameful, or morbid interest, is patently offensive to prevailing standards in the adult community as a whole with respect to what is suitable materials for minors to consume. And, not or, but and, taken as a whole, it has, is without serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value for minors. So this is where we have to look at the whole scenario. When you have a book, you can't just pull out an isolated passage and say that the entire book is without literary value for minors. So that's what our committee is charged with doing, is taking these submissions on a case-by-case basis, and determining whether or not they are appropriate, based on our current community standards. Now, there are First Amendment issues implicated here. Obviously, the government does not have the power to restrict speech, but obscenity is one of those that are, is an exception to that. And again, you have that three-part Miller test that we just went over, that you have to look at when you're going through what material is appropriate for instruction of minors. Again, it has to appeal to the prurient interest in sex, judged by the contemporary community standards, so that would be the entire community, depict or describe sexual conduct in a patently offensive way, and it lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. I think one of the most important things to note in all of this is that parents have the right to ensure that their children are not reading certain books that they may deem inappropriate. That process will be discussed with our academic services team, but I think of all of that, if you feel that something isn't age-appropriate for your specific student, you have the right to then say, "I don't want my child to read this book." And we do have open all of our books, it's listed on our website, parents all have access to it. So with that said, all of this is outlined in Board Policy 2.18. And briefly, just to go over what that discusses, it provides for a process for objecting to library materials. It describes a process for objecting to instructional materials that are currently being utilized by our schools. It also provides for a process for instructional material adoption, and then it provides that same process for objection to proposed instructional materials. So it's also important to note, and I know I've talked to Attorney Dupree Bruno about the possibility, there's a House bill 1467 that is being discussed right now, that could add some additional elements here. It could, there are things that are certainly doable, but would somewhat complicate our current process, but we are keeping our eye on that bill to ensure that any changes are made if necessary. So with that said, I will turn over the actual process that the team will walk you through with Ms. Alivedo.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So those are our guiding documents. So from there, we build out a process document. The inception of this process document was 2015. Since 2015, it was not utilized. So this year, the 2122 school year, is the first time that the process is being utilized. So there'll be a couple of pieces in here when we talk about it, as we've been working with our curriculum advisory committee, of areas that might need some minor adjustment. Now that we actually have this ad hoc committee in place, some of the process needs to be refined somewhat. So the very first piece is that a challenge form is submitted. Inside the original process document, that gets submitted to the school. So it was meant to go to the local, because it was being provided as a parent or guardian. I was submitting it on behalf of my student. So it would go to the principal first. We have already updated the process, that if it's a community, it goes directly to academic services, to one of the three directors of curriculum. So if that needs to be happened, it comes directly here. From there, the process moves over to curriculum and instruction. The principal actually submits that form to the directors of curriculum and instruction, and we conduct an ad hoc committee only if required. There are times and places where that ad hoc committee is not needed. So an instance may be that when the material is looked into in the media center, it's not really in circulation, it's not actually on the bookshelves. One of the things with having an electronic system is it's fluid. So at the school level, it's constantly being reviewed to take inventory of what is actually on our shelves. So one of the first steps is when we get those materials in to check, and is it in circulation at the school? Then based upon the complaint that's coming in, if an ad hoc committee is needed, then it's convened. That committee meets monthly or as needed. So again, looking at our process document that was originally in place up until this time, it hadn't happened, so it's now meeting monthly as it's needed. That committee, and you'll see on the next couple of slides, is looking for very specific pieces, because as Ms. Schroed just said, the book has to be read in its entirety. So every committee member needs to read the book from cover to cover, and they're looking for specific things throughout the book that align back to those statutes that were just discussed. The committee then functions underneath interest-based. So a consensus is reached, conversation is had at there, there's a facilitator that runs the committee, and at the end, it's consensus. Once consensus is reached, that is put in writing and submitted to the chief academic officer, and next actions are taken immediately if needed. And we say, "And next actions taken," because depending upon what the recommendation of the committee is, it will either then get submitted to the superintendent, and then to the school board chair and school attorney, or if this is a book that the committee feels that needs to be removed from the media, that's going to happen at the same time. So at that step of next actions taken, it would be removed, and then that information provided. It would not wait until all information was provided to the superintendent, school board chair, and school attorney. Once that happens, then the directors of curriculum provide the outcome to the petitioner. So whoever submitted the actual complaint on the book would be, received notice on what was the outcome. Finally, once all parties have the information, it's posted to the district webpage. Now, there is a slight update based upon what's there. That one says district's advisory committee information site. It was recommended instead to put it underneath the public calendars, so where we have the other public meetings. And we'll actually go out to the website today, so we can see exactly where that is. But that's the last step in the process, is to post the agenda in minutes, so public has access to them as well. So the committee, who sits on the committee, the directors of curriculum and instruction, sometimes that's one director, sometimes that's multiple directors, it depends upon the book at hand. So it's always the director that oversees that level, but as we have many books that cross levels, then sometimes there'll be multiple directors on there. There's a school-based administrator. It's important to note that the school-based administrator is not from the school in which the complaint originated. So if it is an individual complaint coming forward, then we have administrator that is not from that school. We've also, this says school-based administrator, because it can be an assistant principal or a principal from a location. It can include content coordinators. Originally, the process document had just the English-language arts coordinators. However, many of the books cross content areas. So it's been updated that it might be a social studies coordinator that is sitting on the committee. It might be a fine and performing arts coordinator, depending upon who's available to sit on that committee. There's always a school-based media specialist, a district lead media specialist, a community representative from our curriculum advisory committee, and then a representative from the Department of Equity and Diversity. This slide just reviews what is being evaluated. And again, the most important piece here that we discuss with our committee members is the book needs to be read in its entirety. For all of the pieces that Ms. Schroed just described to you, it is very hard to evaluate a book on its age and maturity, on its intended use of material, if the entire book is not read. So each of the committee members is charged with reading that book prior to coming to the meeting to review it. This is the actual form that is filled out and submitted to the chief academic officer, then to the superintendent and school board chair and attorney. So this form gets completed by the committee, and it's how it is closed out each meeting. There are four recommendations that you're going to see here on the screen. So the first recommendation that a committee may make is to recommend continued use of the material for both instructional materials and for media circulation. It's important to note, as Ms. Schroed talked about earlier, there are processes that just drive instructional materials, similar to how we were just here two weeks ago talking about our math textbook adoption, but then there's also processes for media material. So that first one says, yes, it's recommended for both instructional use and for media. The next one is, the committee could recommend that it is only for media circulation. This would be that we pulled it from instructional use. The third is a flip of that. We'll use it for instructional purposes, but it would not be located in our medias. And then the next one is, we recommend continued use of it, but with specific guidelines. And this is where the committee will make a recommendation, if there's something specific to that book which was being reviewed. So those are the four ways it stays in circulation. And then that fifth piece there is that it's recommended to discontinue use altogether, which means it would be pulled from media circulation, and it would be pulled from instructional use. There's always a place for specific comments that need to be added if the committee had conversations, and it was pertinent to get captured, that's there. And then minutes to the meeting are documented and posted to the page. So that's the process as a whole at high level. And now Dr. Quisenberry is going to talk to you about parent resources, though, and how we can help alleviate some of the concerns and steps that Ms. Schroed discussed.
Thank you. There's many cases where, as Candace stated earlier, that if a parent does not want their child to participate in a piece of instruction, or not check out a book, that they are able to do that without going through this challenge process. So we get a lot of questions from families for, "How can I see what is in my child's media center?" And so every child has Launchpad. They can go onto Launchpad Lee Schools from any, from any computer, even from your phone. And if you go into your child's Launchpad, you're going to go to Follett Destiny, which is our internal inventory program that we use for all instructional materials, as well as media center materials. As Candace says, some of these, some of the things that are inside of Destiny can be fluid, because you're looking at hundreds of children checking out books. And I'm sure when she goes into my child's Destiny in just a minute, he probably has overdue books. And so every once in a while, a child is prone to lose a book, and it's not always updated immediately inside of Destiny. So if a parent wants to see, number one, if you go to my stuff, and then, click out checkouts, a family has access to any, he does have overdue books, doesn't he? See, I told you. You can see all of the books that your child has checked out during that school year. And so if you scroll down, if they're nervous about, "What has my child been checking out? Is he checking it out on the right level?", then they're able to see that. Thank you. Then if you go to the search that's in the upper right, if a parent has a question for whether or not a book is available for their child in the media center, they can simply search any book, and it will pull up whether or not it's available in that media center. As we know, all of our media centers hold different books. Schools purchase materials in their media center based on their students. So you might have a school that has a very high ESOL population, so they're going to have a lot more books that are in Spanish and English language. You might have a school that has a higher reading level population, so they might have higher, a lot more higher reading level books for AR than a different school. And so it's, every school is different, and it's based on their specific student needs. So the next piece, she's going to come back out of Destiny. So let's say I searched in my child's Destiny account, and there was a book, or a series of books, that I don't, I don't believe my child is ready for, I don't want him to have access to. What they can do is they can, go back a slide, oh, wait, that's correct, I apologize. They can contact their child's teacher directly, or they can go through the administration of their school, and simply say, "My child is not allowed to check out XYZ." The media specialist at the school will then put an alert on the child's account. I have an example on that slide that says, it says, "Student." Student is prohibited from checking out, and then it would list the books, or maybe the series of books. Whenever the child goes to the media center to check out a book, that alert will show every time. And so as the person in the media center, and because that person is sometimes fluid, it pops up every single time, and I'm able to say, "Oh, wait, you know, you're not allowed to check out this book, please go back and get a different book." So parents always have that right. Another piece that, can you go back one more time? Go to Overdrive. In secondary, it's much more common that our students are using Overdrive. And so Overdrive is our inventory of digital materials, digital books. And so parents also have access to that. If they go into the Overdrive, they can do a search, and it's the exact same process as what was in Destiny. If a parent does not want their child to have access to Overdrive, they are able to do that same process. They contact their child's school, and they say, "I don't want my child to have access to these materials." And then the school is able to take Overdrive off of their child's Launchpad account. Thank you. If a family decides that they do not believe that the materials, materials are appropriate for all students, and they would like to fill out a challenge form, they're able to go onto our website, to the Parent Bill of Rights, and that's where the challenge form is located. They would click on the challenge form. Candace just went over that process, but this is where they would actually locate the form. They would complete that form in its entirety, and then they would submit it to the principal of the child's school, who then goes through that process and submits it to us. Again, a community Again, a community member, as Candace stated, also has access to that challenge form. And so they would complete it, and then it has the directions for how to submit to one of the curriculum directors as well.
And this just adds, so we went to the one place. You can get to it from the Parent Bill of Rights page, which is where we go to. But then also underneath Parent Portal, parents can go there. Under C is the Challenge to Instructional and/or Media Materials. So that's two of the quick places to get that link for this form on our website. So with that, we will open it up to questions.
Board members, Ms. Gittens, and then Ms. Jordan.
Okay. I'm sitting here listening, and first of all, thank you all so very much for all that you're doing and getting the information out to everyone. But I can't help but think are total demographic. And my question is, if I am not a parent that is, you know, digitally savvy to get on and to do this, or to know about Destiny or Overdrive, or even have the time and inclination to try to see what you're reading, and then not know if I see a book called Ballerina, what does that mean? My question kind of goes back to the beginning. I love the, the challenge aspect, but the challenge aspect reaches this portion of our, you know, constituents. The other portion that don't, for whatever reason, challenge a book, are we saying to them that they don't care if their child is reading something that is totally inappropriate? And I know we're not saying that. So my question on their behalf is, how do we, or where do we stop books that are totally inappropriate, period, from entering to the point that this group of parents has to challenge, but I'm a working parent with four children and two or three jobs, and I don't have time to do this? So how, how do I keep the purity of my child's mind if they go and select a book?
So I can start with first a district process piece. So before any new books are purchased into our Overdrive, which is our electronical, electronic system that Dr. Quisenberry went over, it needs to be reviewed by two individuals and three media sources. So if they do use Common Sense Media, AR Finder, Goodreads, in addition to, Overdrive also has a vetting system that looks at the maturity of the book, the level of the book, and it has, that's our layer of going through a review process before those books are purchased. Now, that's at the district level, and we know the two where, how it's reviewed. School-based also are supposed to follow that same review process before new materials are purchased for their media materials, for their media center, or for their Overdrive, since we have both the electronic and the physical books inside of our schools.
And I want to kind of clarify one thing that was brought up at another meeting, and, and I was asked about it by parents. There was a statement made at some time about, well, the books are, are, you know, categorized. And yes, they're categorized for reading levels, but they are not categorized for content as such. And, and am I incorrect on that? Because the statement was made that, well, you know, if you're in third grade, there's levels of books that you read, but that's just, can you read it? Not what's in it.
Actually, with the text analysis, and there was like some pretty thorough training a few years back on quantitative and qualitative analysis, one of the parts when we do look at text complexity that has to be considered is the maturity and the content of whether or not that's appropriate. So it is part of the analysis, so it's not just the readability of the number of complex sentences and the number of vocabulary, but it also is, is it pertinent and valuable to that student of that age as far as content and maturity? So that is part of the analysis.
Okay. And my last thing I'm going to say, please, is I understand that, and I think kind of devil's advocate for the sake of, of the parents that are very concerned about the issue of certain books that are in our system. Letting them know where we go from here, and because some feel like, well, if this book got through to this point, how do we know there's not others? And are we putting the onus on the public to police that as opposed to us policing it? It's basically what I've been asked. And thank you again for all of your work.
Thank you. I can just speak to my experience as a building-level principal. There weren't books that were purchased that didn't go across my desk. So there is another piece of accountability. Anytime anything is ordered for the, you know, for the media center, you know, we use different companies that we say, we want these types of books. Like I need more 1.1 to 3.1 AR levels. They'll send a list of titles. It'll come to the building principal to approve those titles, and then they're placed into the media center.
So I think something very simplistic, that a book comes in, here's filter one, here's filter two, here's, here's filter three, so that the general public understands in a nutshell and very simply, this is how we vet books to go on the shelves.
And I do want to repeat, too, that parents can contact their schools anytime. So anytime, they don't have to go through the computer and all of those pieces. They can contact the, the child's school and say, hey, can you tell me if these books are in your media center? Or how do I access these pieces? And the schools will help them through that.
And again, I, I hear you. I understand, but the group that I'm talking about is not going to do that. They're, they're not going to go through the backpack and look at the book and go, what is this? I, they just don't have the time or the inclination, let's say. So anyway, thank you again.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Ms. Jordan?
I would just say, I really appreciate the breakdown of the process on how this works as far, and I am aware of those going into the computer and looking those up, because I do it quite frequently with my grandchildren, because I, I can. You know, it's there for us to utilize that, and I really appreciate that. But you sharing that information, I, I thought that was really good, how you shared that. And then even those who have no children in our district still have the opportunity to put a request in through the Parents' Rights Bill. Is that correct? And, and thank you for, Ms. Schroed as well. I know you said that multiple times about, I think both of you did, about reading the book in its entirety. Because we can always pull out certain things out, out of a book that we, or article or whatever. But I think reading everything and getting the content is really good. But I do appreciate that everybody has the ability to contact and challenge any book, regardless of who you are. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you so much. This all makes sense to me now, whereas on words on a paper, it didn't necessarily make sense to me. So thank you. I am disappointed, and this is not a slam, this is a compliment. I am disappointed Ms. Vaughn's not here, because I feel like she's the expert on the board at this specific topic, and I would have loved to have heard what she had to say in the wake of that presentation. On slide five, I believe it is, and I think this is a question for you, Attorney Schroed. Am I on slide five? No, I'm on slide six. It talks about the use of material. How does that apply to materials in the media center if we're not using them, we're just making them available? Or is it a legal distinction without a difference?
I think it's a legal distinction. I think both statute and our current board policy allows a process to challenge any material within our system. You know, we've come across certain books that haven't been used in a very long time. So, you know, it's anything that we make available to students can be challenged.
Cool. All right. Oh, wait a minute. I have notes in my wrong document just came up. Here we go. You said it goes to the principal first, if it's a parent, and it goes to the district second. How many, in the past year, how many objections have gone to our schools? Do you know?
One.
And how many have gone to the district?
An official challenge form, following the process, none. We, we have received lists of books that went through the board or the board attorney or the superintendent, but not with an official challenge form.
Okay. So, so then we are evaluating books outside of the regular process or outside of the established process?
So we, at that first ad hoc committee meeting for, to review the one book that had come in on a form, the committee evaluated the list that was submitted with an email and a letter, and based upon the content of the email and the letter, since it was pointing to specific statute that Ms. Schroed addressed, the committee felt to move forward with reviewing those books. So those books are being reviewed based upon the statute that was referenced via an email and a letter.
I don't know why I wrote this, this down. Something you said jogged my memory. Do you know the book Love You Forever by Robert Munch? I hate that book. I think it's creepy. It's so creepy that an adult mother is sitting on her adult son's lap at the end of the book. It's just the creepiest thing ever. But I'm not going to ask you to take it out of our libraries, because I think it's creepy. You know what I mean? And I feel like that's some of what we have going on here, and that's a little frustrating to me. I know this, this one is for perhaps Attorney DePree Bruno or Attorney Schroed. It's my understanding that we're quarantining books now, or potentially thinking about doing something along those lines?
As of right now, we are not quarantining any books. We are going through the process that the academic services team described, and then once the determination is made at the, the point where it would go up to the superintendent, the decision would be made whether to actually pull the, the media or the, the book from our media centers.
Okay, good. Because I, I would prefer to err on the side of protecting First Amendment rights as opposed to pulling a book until it's been evaluated. What we're doing now in our libraries, allowing parents to put holds on books. Do parents have the ability to do that in a public library?
I don't know the answer to that.
Can they do that on the internet?
Don't know the answer to that. I don't believe so.
I mean, I know that there's some software that we can put on our, on our computers at home to block kids from seeing stuff.
Correct.
And I also know that all four of my kids know how to get around that software. In fact, if I were to look at my phone right now, I probably can't tell you where they are, because they've disabled the tracking software I have on my phone. So it, it seems like we're putting an awful lot of effort into protecting kids from books in schools that are widely available in other avenues or other venues, if that makes sense. And I guess the last thing I want to say for now is, Ms. Gittens, I totally understand what you're saying about parents who don't have the wherewithal. I, myself, work two jobs, and I have unbelievable number of volunteer activities that I do on top of that, and I'm raising four children. And I don't always have time to see what they're reading, or what they're checking out of the library, or what they're doing on the internet, or what they're doing on their phone. But it's not their responsibility to determine what's appropriate for my children and what's not appropriate for my children. So I think that parental responsibility in this realm in particular, when we're talking about prurient interest, and we're talking about, I know it when I see it because it's obscene, or we're talking about things that are that personal and that intimate, in terms of a family's determination about what's appropriate for a child, what's not appropriate for a child, I don't expect the professionals sitting here to make that determination for me. That's my right to make that determination, and it's my responsibility to make that determination. So I'm not arguing with you. I'm just offering a different perspective on, on what it was that, that you mentioned. And that's it for me for now.
Thank you. Okay. May I respond? Ms. Giavennelli, and then Ms. Gittens.
Go, I'll let her respond, because it's, it's ongoing.
Okay.
Well, no, and I was just saying, I am not trying to say that they police. When I was talking about the layers and the filters, that there must be at least one major layer at the beginning that would preclude Fifty Shades of Grey being in the school library. That, that's what I'm talking about. Not the parental decision as to whether you want your student to know this or this. But I, I think there's a determination as to what is, you know, pornographic or, and just, you know, going there. But that level is what I'm saying. I'm not saying I want you guys to read every book and say that, you know, this child won't read it. But I'm saying at that first level of entry into the system. Does that make sense to you? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Giavennelli?
Thank you. So I have like several questions. And so, and to piggyback off of both of what they've said, have we educated our parents in this process? Because that is where there's many layers. And what Ms. Gittens, I think, was talking about somewhat is the digital divide, the, the unknown. You don't know what you don't know. So how are we educating our parents in the process? How long have we been doing this process?
The process has been in place since 2015. But again, we, we've had no challenges up until this year.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to add to that. I think it should be noted that, you know, we have taken complaints that didn't go through the formal process as described by the team here. And if that happens, if a parent raises a concern, we're not going to say, no, we're not going to consider this because you didn't fill out this form. We're going to work with the parent in an attempt to assist them in making whatever challenge they wish to make.
Okay. So, and so back to, I think, for regard, and I'm talking about parental rights. So, and they don't, not everybody knows your rights, you know? That's why you have to read them to them before they arrest them. So I'm kind of going to go on that angle a little bit. Like, we need to educate our parents. And that goes back to educating the staff at the school level to be able to do that, because that's where it starts, and their understanding. I know you, you mentioned that they can contact the school and everything, but if they don't even know the process, then they can't educate or guide them in that, in that right, the direction that, that works for everyone and helps us process so we know and keep, keep track. So that one, that was challenged, what was that outcome?
Their challenge was it for, for the book to be removed from the Sunshine State list, and that's not in our purview. So they, they received the contact for who to contact at the state of Florida for that. And then the other piece of the challenge was for their child not to have access to that book. It was for a book that's part of our book battle. So we do the Sunshine State books as part of book battle in elementary school. The book was one of those, and so it was simple of your child is not required to read this book for book battle.
So, and that's great. That's a perfect example of not knowing the process, or being in the, sent in the right direction or guided properly. So I think it, like it goes back, you know, we're in the education business, so we need to be educating our parents, which would in fact educate the community, which would help in this whole process. So, I mean, that, that's what I think is important. Because, so like the Launchpad, how, how long has that been implemented? Because I loved it.
Do you know how long we've had Launchpad?
I believe Launchpad we've had since we launched the one-to-one initiative, where it just at least had the, the applications that students could access. Is that correct?
Ms. Alton just said 2014, if I'm looking at his, reading his lips correctly. And we did do a large push with Launchpad when we went to distance learning two years ago, in that March 2020, every resource that we had for our students. So that one, we have been actively pushing that families know Launchpad.lee schools. net is where they can access anything for their students. So that's their first place of anything curriculum-wise and our resources for them.
And, and the reason why I ask that is the community doesn't know about that until you've told us today. I mean, you know, so, I mean, it's really important, because someone that might be here challenging books may not have a student that has Launchpad, you know, so they don't have that access. So I think it's just, it's about how we educate, and that's, that's the business we're in. So I appreciate what, the whole, this has been awesome today. I have one other question regarding the ad hoc committee. How, how is it determined out of the two? How is it determined, out of the two advisory committees, that you have someone, representations from that, how is that determined? Who is that usually? That's basically for transparency purposes for me.
Do you mean how do we determine who on the curriculum advisories is represented? We ask for volunteers.
You just ask for volunteers?
We ask for volunteers, yes.
I know it hasn't happened too often, but I know that that's going to be a question that's asked of me, how that, who is that, you know?
So we had one last month and there was a volunteer. And then, our next meeting, as you know, is Monday. And so we'll ask for more volunteers for the next meetings.
Awesome. So thank you for that. I think...
And if we could just show, since we're there and coming back, it didn't fit naturally within that presentation, but so, when committee members and then results. So underneath calendars on our leeschools.net page, underneath public meetings, there's a folder that, or page now, that says the Challenge to Instructional Media Committee. So this is where that goes. There are the meeting dates. And then, following suit of the other committees, there's a folder for agendas and minutes. So going back to kind of that presentation, just bringing it back together, as you asked about committee, that's where that information can be found as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Again, thank you so much. This has been very enlightening for me. And I think the community will appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Yes.
Just a suggestion based on what Ms. Giavanelle just said, and Mr. Mangin, if you're listening, or please don't hate me, but maybe included in the student code of conduct because parents are supposed to review that at the beginning of every school year with their kids. You talked about educating parents. That would be a way to force the education of parents at the beginning of every school year regarding the...
Process.
Challenge form. And the other thing that I guess I didn't make clear before, and I really think it's about the slides that were included by Ms. Schroed, Attorney Schroed, is the language in those Supreme Court cases is real. And that is the language by which we must conduct ourselves. So even though I think Love You Forever is the creepiest book on the face of the planet, I can't, the law does not permit me to bar access to that book by other families in the community. I just, and again, like you said, it's not one passage, it's not five passages in a 250-page book. It's the entire work that you have to look at. And if the entire work appeals to the prurient interests, then we have an issue. But if five passages in a book appeal to the prurient interests, that's not the entire material. So I get the words on the page of the law, and I think we're doing a really good job following the law. How I feel as a parent and what my kids are permitted to read is completely different from what you guys just presented to me today. Does that make sense? So I just, I'm very grateful that you did it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Giavanelle.
I'm sorry. So, and that leads me to think, you know, back to something I had mentioned earlier regarding, I don't know that we have to take the books out, but how do we, say, the content might not be, you know, at what level, you know, how is that, how do parents know the content is at the level that it, you know, that it's, you know, adult-themed or, you know, how we do, how the, I mentioned the movies, how the movies rate their movies. And I know that's, I've been told it's different, but it's still, in a parent's eyes, you know, what's G-rated content is appropriate for elementary is really important for a parent. And if, you can't read every book to know what that, you don't, that's impossible. So, you know, how do we, and I don't want to say control, but how do we decide, make sure that we have the books that are at the right levels of each, of their education, you know, stature?
So we're going to invite Ms. Baberk to come up for just a second as well to answer that because there are interest levels in there that tie to it. It's part of what the committee does. And I think she would be able to provide a little more insight into that.
So when they're looking at best practices for selecting during their collection development, content appropriateness is one of the big things they got to look for. And they are, a lot of the review sites will give an interest level of, you know, a primary or middle grades, meaning fourth through sixth grade, middle grades plus, meaning sixth through eighth, or high school level books. So they actually do review those as well when they're looking at the book. So you might have The Color Purple, which, on a reading level, is a fourth-grade reading level, but the interest level is definitely adult. And that's not appropriate for elementary. So that is one of the big things that they really do look at when selecting these materials. What is that interest level? Where is it and how appropriate is it? And for the elementary schools, they're really looking at their population. They're supposed to be looking at the, not only the reading levels, but those interest levels because you will have a student who is reading at a higher reading level, but you need that interest level that is for them. And for, and so those books are based on, and they're put into the libraries that they're appropriate for. For Overdrive, they do have, they are also content access where the elementary schools are only going to see those elementary books. They will never have access to anything that is coded a higher reading level. So we do make sure that those things are very well looked at when selecting the materials. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you so much. Because I think the community doesn't know, like I said it earlier, you don't know what you don't know. So it's important for you to be able to, you know, educate us. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I'm sorry?
I think Ms. Gittens had a question. No?
No. Okay. Thank you very much for a wonderful presentation and for answering a lot of our questions. And have a good afternoon. Okay, it's 1:55, and we need to take a 10-minute break for our technology people to reset before we go on to our agenda review. So thank you for your patience. So at this time... And we're ready to resume our briefing meeting for our agenda review. Sergeant-at-Arms or Sergeant-at-Arms-designee, has the front lobby been attended to ensure public access? And are we ready to proceed with this meeting? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we can proceed with the meeting. Next on our agenda is the agenda review for this evening's agenda. And I'll turn it over now to Dr. Savage.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So I'll just proceed in order. The first question that we received today was item H1. This was polled prior to the meeting. It's the approval of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief ESER Fund under the American Rescue Plan Act grant. Please explain why this item was polled and does it have any effect on bargaining? Our response today is from Ms. Kennedy. Ms. Kennedy?
Good afternoon. The item was pulled in order to put the actual presentation on. Board briefing, which is on March 7th. So, we met with each of you this past week to go over the particulars with the ESER III application, but we wanted to make sure that we also did a presentation and included some of that when we present the strategic plan. So that'll happen on March 7th. And then as far as, does it affect bargaining at all? It does not.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right. My, Madam Vice Chair, the next item is H4. Approval of the Florida Post-Secondary Comprehensive Transition Program, the FPCTP grant. The questions for this item were, please provide me with the plan in detail on how you're going to use this $900,000 grant. Objective four, increase workforce success, how? Provide examples. Objective three, increase college and career readiness, how? Give examples. Objective one, increase academic achievement, how? Provide the action plan. And we are fortunate to have Mr. Todd Everly, our Senior Director of the Technical College, is here to answer those questions.
Good morning, everyone, or afternoon. I want to introduce you to somebody here. I always like putting the face of the people that actually do the work and make it happen. But this is Christian Zimmerman. He is our higher coordinator, program coordinator for the higher grant. He works out of the Fort Myers Technical College site, but this is also part of the Cape Coral Technical College's site well. So, he's going to get into the weeds if you want that. I know we responded earlier today on all those questions. Did you want every one of those? They're going to be very lengthy if you want every one of those written out that I responded back. I was not sure. I could go over what this grant's about and so on, but if you wanted the four questions that you just wrote, Doc, we'll be more than happy to, but they're very lengthy. They're right out of the grant.
Was it emailed to us?
They were emailed to you at 11 o'clock. Well, let me say this, well, I sent it back to staff to send back to you. Yes, ma'am.
We're happy to provide the written answers to this.
That would be great.
Wonderful.
And I just, actually, I just think it's a kind of, it looks like it's a really wonderful program. And I was like, it was really more for the community to know all the good things that you're doing and what this is for the community.
Yes, ma'am. I can give you a brief overall of that if that is suffice.
That would be awesome.
The higher grant is under the Florida Center of Students with Unique Abilities. It helps students with intellectual disabilities pursue technical trades or certificates. To seek, the ultimate goal is to seek employment. This grant is through the University of Central Florida and oversees the grant. And in short, its mission is to get the ever opportunity for everybody to seek employment. And this is to give them some unique training to allow them for an employer to see. To answer some other questions, this grant's been here since 2020. We've had 17, and if I'm off a little bit, Christian, please let me know, sir. But we had 17 students already gone through the process with this grant proposal of the $900,000. We are looking at 14 more new students and add four more each year. There are several technical colleges and community colleges that are using this. Actually, there's 17 in the state, but if you want me to list the names that are actually using this, it's Orange County Technical College, USF St. Pete. There's two in Broward County. There's Towahausie Community College and also Lively Community College that is also using this grant. It's a win-win for this community and it's pretty unique what Christian does with his staff, very small staff, to give somebody a chance to contribute that probably wouldn't get a chance to contribute. So this is worthwhile for us. And I did send that, Ms. Giovanni, I sent pretty lengthy on those four, how it meets the strategic goal and all that. It was right out of the grant and we're more than happy, I did get it sent today.
Awesome, so thank you. You know, we don't tell our story enough, and this is one of those that I felt that we needed to know more about. And it was, you know, it's a million dollars almost. So, in helping our community and helping our students be successful out of and after high school is really important and one of my main focuses. So, I just wanted to make others aware of something that I think is a good thing. Thank you so much.
Christian, is there anything else that you wanted to add to that, sir? I'm not putting you on the spot, ma'am, but...
That's okay.
Okay.
I do, oh, I gotta lean in here. Sorry, I used to be in the classroom, I didn't have a microphone. My voice kind of carries, was always the comment I got. So, yeah, this is a phenomenal program and I appreciate you for bringing me in here to talk a little bit more about it. And you're exactly right, Ms. Giovanni, increasing community awareness has been one of my priorities since day one. That's why I partner now with the Chamber of Commerce, both in Fort Myers and Cape Coral. And they have been a phenomenal ally with us in gaining employment opportunities for our students. And then also in breaking down some of those presuppositions that people in the community have around hiring an adult with an intellectual disability. And I did just want to share one success story. I was actually talking to Dr. Grant, sir, about this. We have a young man in our culinary arts. He's a product of Lee County. He graduated from Lee High Senior High School. His dream job is to work at Publix. And when you talk to somebody about a dream, it's kind of interesting because dreams are subjective. You know, what my dream may be compared to your dream are different. But when we talked to this young man about how, you know, well, Publix is a great place to work, but what about something else? He didn't even anticipate or think about something else because this was his dream. And I am proud to say that he has his SERVSafe certification. It's an industry cert that he passed on his own and he will be hired by Publix to work in the deli. So, that's just one success story. And we have a few of them, and they're going to grow every year this program exists. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for that, sharing that story because that's really, means a lot. Because it's what we're supposed to be doing. And so, I just really, really, really appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens.
And you have to know that the teacher in you just oozes out, right?
Golden Apple 2016.
There you go.
Now, you can understand why I wanted to, that's right. I wanted to introduce, this is the gentleman that makes this happen. And it's easier for leaders to come up here and talk about it, but I wanted to introduce the people that are actually making it work. And you can see why we're excited about having Christian with our technical college system.
Absolutely, and thank you so much. Board members, anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Mr. Everly.
Gentlemen. All right, the next up, we have item H6. Approval of the English Language Learners Plan for the 2022 to 2025 years. The question was, in this time of staffing crisis, how are we handling this objective? How does the LEA assist parents and students who do not speak English in the registration process? Languages spoken by employees at the SAO sites include English and Spanish. Where available, community language facilitators can also assist with translating or interpreting registration documents, as well as transportation, other pertinent school information. Website information is available in English, Spanish, Haitian Creole. So we have Dr. Rivera and Saretta Ralph here to answer today.
Good afternoon. How's everything today?
Hi.
So, we have a bilingual staff in the student enrollment department. When parents come into the enrollment department, we have staff that available to assist them. Oftentimes, our staff, our parents that come in that need assistance, we don't oftentimes know what language they're going to come in speaking. Many of our parents come in speaking various dialects. So, even though we are available in various languages, that dialect is sometimes another language. So, we oftentimes rely on Google Translate, and sometimes it takes multiple staff to assist them. When we get focus up and going, we'll be able to rely on focus to assist them, but still, it's going to take, as we shall say, a village to assist our families. We do use our student enrollment emails, and when parents email in a different language, we use Google Translate again to see what language they're emailing us in, and then we'll respond back to them in the appropriate language and get staff to assist. I'll let Evelyn respond back also on different services that we're able to provide.
Good afternoon. We have a plan in place. We are contracting a company that is for translations and interpretations. You know, the difference between both, interpretation is the spoken language and the translation is the written language. So, we're having, almost done with the contract. We've been going back and forth with fixing things on their end, fixing things on our end. And as soon as we finish the contracting, our schools and all the district departments are going to have access to translation in 240 languages and dialects.
Oh, my goodness.
So, this is a very, really wonderful step. Thank you to Dr. Savage and to Dr. Spiro for their support in this plan. And this is going to be, this is going to be a wonderful support for everybody in here. Any parents that come to student assignment that speak any other dialect, they can, you know, they have a special code, their staff, and they will call on the phone, and there will be another person in a matter of 20 seconds that speak the language or the dialect of the parent.
Wonderful. Ms. Patricia, then Ms. Gittens.
Is that the language line?
Language line solutions, yes. Yes.
Okay, Ms. Gittens.
Yes, this was my question, and thank you so much for your answer. Another question with this, though, is as our demographic and numbers have changed and shifted to all of these different dialects and more languages and all of that, how has your, has your staff grown to accommodate that? I mean, besides getting the company, that's awesome. But, I mean, I've seen the lines out there and see all the need, and I'm just wondering, have we continued to provide the need in that department that's necessary?
We have not grown by much, by two teachers, by two ESOL specialists that were added to our department last year. But we have, right now, our staff consists of 20 ESOL professionals that we have to support schools in addition to the paras that the district provides. These are supplementary, not so planting. And also the ESOL specialists that provide support to the teachers, they're now shifting their role into, in addition to provide support to the teachers by modeling lessons and also, you know, giving, you know, having those conversations with the teachers about good practices for ELLs. They're also now going into the classroom and providing support to a small group of kids. They sit down with the students and they model also what their, the ESOL specialist is for example, teaching a, something, the content. The teacher can observe and also the ESOL professionals can observe in order to expand also best practices into the classroom.
So, and this may be a question to the superintendent, and we talk all the time about upward mobility in the district. Are these positions that are so needed and becoming so necessary, are they a step up? Let's say if you were an ESOL para in a school, is there a forward trajectory that you can move up to, you know, being a translator at the district or doing something? Do you understand what I'm asking? If there's anything like that? Because the need is not going away. And if we make it, you know, look good to people that maybe want to move up the ladder? So, I don't know.
Dr. Rivera was, is probably the most uniquely qualified as, you know, she really is over the full range of services that we provide. And obviously, they vary significantly across. The biggest training, though, that we do is really helping all teachers be armed with really an understanding of how to, knowing that we can't necessarily replicate, as you mentioned, you know, hundreds of languages. And obviously, we've seen with like the Mayan dialect piece that came through with our Guatemalan families. You can't find people necessarily that even have that skill set, but what can you do? And I think that's where the SIOP, and there's a number of training pieces, but in terms of the staffing, which I think is specifically the question, is the direct services provided by staff. Dr. Rivera, do you have, are you willing to share just kind of some of the different types of positions that we have in the district to provide specialized expertise such as the para professionals, ESOL para professionals, as well as the specialist?
In our department?
Pardon? Really, in the schools or within your department?
Okay, yes. We have ESOL para professionals that are provided by the district, and also we have additional supplementary ESOL para professionals that come from Title III. We also have ESOL specialists that are based on the district and they are deployed to the schools to support schools. We have two compliance specialists that we also look for, that FTE, weighted FTE for ESOL. And we have a coordinator, and we have an ELL instructional leader. Her main role is to support the schools and provide the basic, the SIOP training, and also orchestrate and also plan and collaborate with other schools in order to provide specific training during PLCs and also school-wide and for the entire staff. Those are the basic services that we provide, in addition to also provide services for translations, too.
Okay. And I guess my major question, and you can get back to me, whoever, but as that population of our school district has increased, have we increased that staff? That's basically what I'm asking.
Ms. Jordan.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank both of you for all the work that you do. And yes, I see the lines and I, and I see how quick you try to get through every single one and all the different languages that are standing in line as well. So, you do an amazing job of that. And then, Dr. Rivera, you also, too, you hold a, is it a monthly meeting where you hold for the parents who need some extra help as far as knowing what's going on with the schools? It's a, it's like parent university, but it's for the ELL.
Talk about the ESOL Institute, ELL Parent Institutes?
Yes, so you do, you do hold that for our parents?
We do.
Who do need to understand more of the things that we are doing, which I think is amazing as well.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for doing that.
In addition to that, we also hosted an ELL Institute for parents to help them understand about the different programs that we provide to their children so they know how to use the program, to learn the benefits of the program, so they can also support the students at home also.
Correct. And it's in English and Spanish as well? I mean, it's different languages, multi-language. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Board members.
If I could add just one more thing?
Yes.
I would be remiss if I don't. We have, as far as the district growing, we enrolled 1,200 students new to the district for this current school year in the month of January alone. During that month, 160 of those students came to the district with IEPs. So, of those students, those are, that's the population that's currently coming new to our district. With that, our population of students are growing. Our district is continuing to grow. Our staff is staying the same, too, in student enrollment. We've enrolled currently for this upcoming school year, for '22, '23. We started the application period January 17th. There are two students, just throwing it out there, that haven't done their enrollment for next year yet.
Are they about five years old?
12,000-plus students have got their applications in for next school year.
When Bethany had her overdue books, there is a very specific, I'm telling you, unbelievable.
12,000 students have entered their applications. 12,000 students have entered their applications for next school year, and they've already been processed. This is the last week. So, not only are we getting those students processed for next school year, we're getting 1,200 students in a month, new to this school year. So, we're, we have the same number of staff, but we're continuing to grow. And I know this, this school district is continuing to grow, and I continue to say that. And I know each of our departments, and our schools are growing. And I know we're, we are really, really struggling as a district in every place, but I just, I would be remiss if I did not bring that up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there...
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, Ms. Gittens.
I don't know, I'm just jumping way outside the box now, but it seems like, years ago, I used to work as a part-time sub at the post office in Chicago. And I bring this up because during that period of time, like around the holidays with Christmas and all that type of thing, and there was a different pay differential for that time period. Do we do that? Have we looked at that? That, you know, between January and March, when they are just flat out with, you know, 1,200 more students, do we offer some type of a, you know, peak supplement?
Without getting too deep in the operational weeds on this, I, because obviously, we've had these conversations with our situation here, I just, it would be remiss to say, we've certainly had those conversations about peak time. What's the overtime? What does that look like? What are additional groups that potentially can help with that? Like, for example, just to your point, Ms. Gittens, when I was a backend administrator at a middle school, I remember, for student enrollment, you know, normally, who would enroll students throughout the year? It was our guidance counselor. We had one guidance counselor in the school. The backup to that was the assistant principal, which was me. So, when new families would enroll in us, we would build their core schedule, we would do those kinds of things. However, when we'd enroll an entire new sixth grade coming to that middle school, it was all hands on deck. We had teachers trained, so essentially, we expanded. When I did an analysis of a supervisor of elections office in our state, they are an incredibly agile organization because they, their permanent staff footprint is usually very, very small, but they expand to thousands of employees, both volunteer and permanent extra pay and things of those natures. So, there's always that analysis to try to be responsive to our piece. The other piece that we do, we didn't discuss yet, is just how do we continue to adapt the processes we use to increase efficiency of our side of it? Leveraging technology, things that are more, that don't require the same interaction point. When you are studying the people who are walking in through the lobby who could have done it virtually, why did they not? Using things such as virtual. Using things such as virtual, so they can actually have a live person, but on the other end of a computer instead of having to do it during a regular office hours. There's a litany of things I could go through, different conversations about that piece, but the reality of it is, just like we're seeing here in the district with the growth, it's very significant because that's happening in our schools. And again, we are short hundreds of teachers sadly. So those are just all the competing things when we need, when we have many students. It's a good problem to have that we have more students moving to Lee County. The other piece that mentioned by both of our two speakers here today is the diversity of the students that we are, we're seeing in Lee County and meeting those needs as well. That continues to be our work and we'll continue to evaluate all those pieces. So, thank you ladies for answering the questions and then some.
Thank you very much. Okay.
All right. The next item we have, if I may. J1, approval of personnel recommendations. The question was, please update on my suggestion to include in the LMS the ability for part-time subs. I made this suggestion at our last meeting, was told it was possible. Add one line to sub LMS process advertising and communicating the availability to the general public. And then, how do the change in assignments from teachers affect class coverage, i.e. more classes to be covered? And then I'll, the second half of that I'll break off.
So, the, talking about part-time, substitutes are all part-time. So, half-day substitutes have always been in existence. That's something if a teacher's out for a half-day and they use LMS, we try to get a half-day substitute. However, advertising it or bringing it to people's attention is something we'll certainly work on and I can work with payroll, because LMS is not in HR, it's in payroll, to put that word out. So, that's the answer to that comment. The coverage, we have four people transferring to jobs, one to an athletic director, I think two to coaches, and all instructional personnel right now are providing coverage, even if they're in a coaching job. So, because it's all hands on deck, so that's my response to that.
Yeah, and I would understand that they would be covering classes as well, but it kind of speaks to what I was saying before. If you move a teacher that has, you know, let's say seven periods or whatever of classes and they move into another position, how many of those classes are now left for the teachers that are already covering for the other classes? Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I do exactly. I mean, I'm just looking at the changes of assignment. One's at Calusa Middle, she's promoting a teacher to a coach. So I'm sure that principal's, that's an internal, that's not one person going from one school to another. One is going from being a teacher to an athletic director, which is essentially a promotion in some respects. One is going from being a teacher to intervention support specialist, which is a critical position with MTSS. And the final one is going from being a teacher to a math coach at James Stephens internally. So they're all internal moves. They're not people going from one school to another.
And within the school, then, they still have the same number of classes to cover that they're eligible to do?
Yeah.
And the second part really had to do, I think it was either the superintendent or Dr. Spiro mentioned at our last meeting, when I suggested about district staff going out to help. And the answer was, if the administrator of the school asks for that help, then they would go out. And my response was, I would like to see how many classes that equates to at the end of the week. In any period that we have somebody other than someone in that building covering a class, may potentially save us a teacher that leaves because of the stress.
Right.
So, I think if we say to the public, we are doing this and in the last week, we covered, you know, 50 classes throughout the district by district staff, that is a palatable, easy to understand statement.
I agree with you.
That everyone would go, great, they're all, all hands on decks, truly.
Sure. Okay. That's an academic services function, but I'll get with Dr. Spiro to get that information for you. Absolutely.
Thank you. Rob, if you want to hang on for just a second, we do have to have a big second part of this and it's pretty lengthy, so rather than reading it verbatim, the basic thrust of this was, again, Ms. Juvenelli, this was actually your question.
Yes.
So the idea of not making any administrative changes at the current piece until Dr. Bernier's involved. And just wanted to kind of highlight from my perspective on this, and then if you want to go into more depth on this, you know, certainly, you're, in the question, it was raised, basically, the intention of a new person coming in, having, say, overstaff and so forth. One of the reasons through our transition time that we have maintained a lot of communication is so that there is a natural onboarding of Dr. Bernier. Obviously, he's not under contract at this time. And until he is, you know, obviously, the work of the district has to move forward at the same time. I, if anyone is aware, I am well aware of the difficulty of when you go into a system, not just the people in it, but the structure that is there. You have, as a chief executive, you have to be able to do the work. And based on the wide array of experiences that Dr. Bernier's had in different districts, he's seen the way it works in a lot of different areas. He, I would certainly encourage that he needs to be given every opportunity to do the work the way he sees fit. It's a balancing act, from my perspective, of basically, the work of the district has to proceed. We, it's, we're in February right now, if he's in place, maybe, say, May, that's a significant period of time the district has to continue doing work. But I am very discerning in terms of, like, there's a position in mind right now, a director position that I'm thinking of, that just, I want to make sure he has every opportunity to understand what is happening in the district and if he has different concepts for those kinds of things. So that said, I just wanted to give you my take on that piece. I know that you had specific asks in there. Feel free to eliminate those questions now for the group's conversation. I think that's what your question really had, but I don't know that that was really for Rob. But I want to make sure he was here in case there was any aspect that was specific to staff that they could address based on the agenda for today, that he was available for that as well.
So, my concern is that we're hiring people at the district level right now, that it's something that may be that Dr. Bernier should be doing. And my concern is why, we haven't had this position filled for now well over almost, I think going on almost two years. So why push it through now? Why not wait until Dr. Bernier's can make that call? Now, if, if he was here, I would ask him, you know, to work with you and y'all work that out and then I would respect that. But I just don't want, I don't want to see a bunch of hires happen in the next two or three months that he has no control of, that he wants to, that he would want to change or, you know, or actually circumvent him from being able to change that. And so that is my concern. You know, I'm thinking about how, when you came in and how you tried to make changes and you weren't allowed to do that. I mean, at this point in time, you're just a placeholder. So I think that we need to really respect the new superintendent. And in doing so, I think that we need to really evaluate any moves that are happening here at the district level. Of course, I want to be really clear that nothing, where the need is at the school level, when they need to hire somebody, that I would not want to touch that with a 10-foot pole because that's really where the greatest need is. And I recognize that and respect that and wouldn't want that, you know, I want them to have that ability to do so and, because we're all short in schools. And so if they can get a teacher, even for the last three months of school, I would never want to stop that. So that's really my concern. And I don't know if anybody else at the, on the board here even shares the same concern, but it's something that I thought of recently and I just don't want to see a bunch of new hires coming in at the district level and Dr. Bernier not have the, you know, the ability to oversee any of that. So that's my question. If anybody has the appetite for that, I would love to know.
Ms. Jordan?
I think that, and I believe that he's watching this briefing as well. So, so Dr. Bernier is aware of, I believe, what has taken place here and of course, at this time until that contract is signed, Dr. Savage is the superintendent. And at such time when he does come on, that power will be shifted. But he is being responsible as far as keeping us up to date, being, participating and listening in. And he clearly stated that that is what his intention was, was to make sure that he's, that he was going to listen in to this afternoon and this evening, as well as our one-on-ones. And so what is coming before us in our one-on-ones through the superintendent, Dr. Bernier is definitely aware of and he is, has knowledge of that because he's listening to our conversations. Plus, he has his one-on-ones with Dr. Savage on a weekly basis as well. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
I was going to say that as well, that Dr. Bernier, hi if you're out there, is watching and participating and does meet with the superintendent on a regular basis. And also the fact that he has stated that he is working on his plan, I forget what you call it, the day one plan and all that. And I will say, one of the things that, that kind of swayed my vote with him was my one-on-one with him when I discussed some of these very things. And his answers were very concrete, were very deliberate. And so, in the meantime, I think the collaboration between the two, we've talked a lot on this day, it's about a smooth transition. And I think we need to work on making sure that that is just as smooth as possible and, you know, handing off the baton and I'm sure it won't be dropped, so.
Thank you. Board members, other comments? Okay, I, you know, Dr. Savage is not only a placeholder, he is our superintendent now legally. And the work of the district has to continue. It'll probably be close to three months before Dr. Bernier is free to come here and be sworn in, at which time he becomes the superintendent. So I don't think that we should hold up the progress of the district as things are changing and we're growing and we need help, not only in schools, but at the district level also. So I support Dr. Savage's personnel recommendations and it looks to me like most of them are from in-house anyway and people are already doing the job. And, you know, now we'll be, basically have the title and the pay to go with that. So, I appreciate your caution, but I think we need to keep moving forward in spite of the fact that we have hired a new superintendent who is in contract negotiations now.
So, and thank you, thank you for that. But my concern, you know, I don't want to take away from the need, but I mean, we need to pay our teachers and staff more and if we keep hiring at the district level and not fulfilling the need, the real need, then it causes me to pause. So and that's where I, I just want to make sure that Dr. Bernier has the full authority to be able to proceed. And that's my concern is we start filling positions that have been vacant for a long time and all of a sudden they're important. That is alarming when the job's been done and is being done and it's not stopping progress at all. It's just allowing the new superintendent to not be circumvented. That's my biggest concern, so.
I think I may have something that would help on that, Ms. Juvenelli. So one of the issues is that every year, the way we basically do reappointments, that comes into play in the latter part of this, of our year here. So that's right around the May-June area, which then begin in July is when the new contract year starts. So it's not uncommon and very typical for us that during our adjustments, if a person wants to make adjustments where they believe, like for example, when I had the $4 million reinvestment plan, that involved certain positions in the district going back out into schools. A lot of the things that we're talking about right now during this budget season are all about those things. Dr. Bernier, the day he walks in is simply going to need time as well, and so that's a big part of the reason why he is, he is very actively involved in learning and listening of what's going on. I would just say that he's also very clear about his boundaries of his role, that in his current state, where he's negotiating contract and trying to get through that, it would be inappropriate for him to provide direction to staff or to me. That's just not his role right now and he's been very respectful through the whole process of acknowledging that. At the same time, I know very clearly that he is our next superintendent and so I am making every effort, as he is, we are working collaboratively as much as possible so that it's not a situation as what you're describing where I'm going to appoint a bunch of folks and then all of a sudden, he's going to inherit a difficult situation. That is absolutely the last, the last thing that I would consider doing. But I will say that like if a person appointed now, this week or next week or so forth, they still get, they still have their renewal period, just as everyone else does. The only people who don't have the renewal period that falls in those same windows has to do with like people on negotiated contracts, like the attorneys, myself, we're the ones who kind of fall outside. Any specific contracted work that is beyond that, that is the, it's a very small number. And so, any adjustments with the budget, if people were to decide, you know, I kind of like these two departments, I'll just consolidate them. That's the work we're going through with the budget and certainly will have lots of opportunity to hear whatever suggestions have come up through department managers, directors, executives and chiefs. But that's a normal process that we go through annually. So I hope that helps a little bit on that side.
Yes, it does. Thank you so much. So, and I just have to ask one question. So the $4 million savings that you, were you, were you able to implement that savings?
No, I was not.
That's all?
About a million, we were able to invest, about a million.
Thank you. I know. Thank you.
Okay. Any, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Dode. We appreciate you.
Okay.
K2.
Next one up is K2, approval of expenditure for ITN number N207390DG, E-Rate network infrastructure equipment. The question was, please remind me how much infrastructure equipment that was installed last year and at what facilities? We are to have Chief Dwayne Alton here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So when we, the first question of, remind you how much was installed off of last year's period, it's actually waiting to be installed, it's actually waiting to be delivered because we're having supply chain challenges. So they've been delayed and we've had to get extensions from federal government on E-Rate in order to get those. But if those were here, we had, it's 404 pieces of, 404 pieces of equipment going into 66 sites. So I didn't know if you wanted me to read them to you or if you'd like me to just drop an email.
All 466, please.
I just, I knew we did this last year and so I was just actually more curious and it's, you know, it's a lot of money and I like for people to know.
Sure. And we do this on an annual basis. We replace equipment on an aging cycle. So your network equipment that this is, you know, typically your five-year-old equipment would be getting replaced this year, probably more towards the summer than during the school year this year. But we continue to do that on a five-year planning cycle for most of that equipment.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alton. The next is L3, approval to piggyback the school district of Manatee County, ITB number 22-0004-MR bleacher repair services. The question is, is this a sales tax expenditure? If so, please provide the URL connected to change or change website. And our response today is from the lovely and talented Ms. Kelly Letcher from our budget department.
Thank you all. So, no, we are not using sales tax dollars to cover the bleacher repairs. This is an ongoing project from well before we received the sales tax. It's a safety compliance thing and so we continue to do that without sales tax dollars. We'll continue using our regular dollars to do that.
For me?
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
I guess, and my question was, when we did get the sales tax and you looked at all the things we needed to do, was there a decision that something like this could move over to that side for sales tax or, or prior to the sales tax, because I wasn't here, did you have that list already set up?
So basically, what we did when we were going out for this sales tax is we got with the maintenance department and all of our safeties and air and departments and stuff. And we, you know, we were so far behind in our, maintaining of our schools. And we said, if we got this money, what would we want to utilize it for? What would be our priorities? And based on that, we went through and said, you know, all of our schools need new carpeting, all of our schools need, you know, this safety feature. And we went through and prioritized things based on what have we not been able to keep up with that really needs to be done? And that's how we set the priorities of the things that we would put into the sales tax. Something like the bleacher repairs, that's a Something like the bleacher repairs, that's an ongoing project, and, you know, we could move it over, but we had those other pressing things, and we were already taking care of this. So instead of moving it over, we said, what can we do with the additional dollars that we haven't been able to do? And that's where we prioritized.
The second part of the question had about the plumbing and repair services, is that, is that also, I guess, the same type of thing? Plumbing?
Ms. Malley here for that one.
Yeah, that was, that was based on the contract, so I didn't see a question on sales tax with that one, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Letcher. And now, Ms. Susan Malley for this item. This is L6, and this is the approval to renew the plumbing repair services ITN.
Hello.
Hi.
Question was, since this is a renewal of a three-year contract for three additional years, was there a new bid process in light of significant economic changes since 2019? Ms. Malley?
The request is for the renewal for a one-year renewal period, so it's not a three-year renewal period. So it was, the original base contract was for three years, and the request before the board is to renew a one-year agreement. And it would be in our best interest to proceed with the bid that was previously awarded, and the current awarded vendor has agreed to do so, so that, we believe that would be the best approach.
And, if I may?
Yes, please.
And I'm not questioning your decision on why. I guess I'm looking at the contracts that are three years, that we automatically do every year, and then at the end of the three years. When they come up now, in this particular economic time and under the circumstances, do we kind of take another look at them to see, is that the best thing for right now, based on the economy and all the things that we're going through? That's basically what I'm asking. At what point do we say, okay, so let's just take one step back and look at this? Do we just automatically do it again, whether it be one year or three years? And that's kind of my question.
Right. So there's never just an automatic renewal. It's a very thoughtful process that the department that's using the services is given a questionnaire about the services, about the vendor's performance. And in addition, we ask about market conditions when we're doing a new bid. I don't think we do that necessarily as we're doing a renewal. The, what we're seeing with current market conditions is, we are asking, our standard process is to ask vendors to renew as they originally signed up for. So when the solicitation goes out, they're aware of how many years of renewal years there are. They're even given the option to, you know, they can state they want an increase of 5% in the third or fourth year, or something to that effect. But at this point in time, the vendors that are unable to commit to renewing, so our process is to contact the vendors a couple months in advance, ask them if they're interested in renewing at the same terms and conditions, which includes pricing. And when they come back and say yes, that means they've accepted the terms, we've accepted the terms that we all agreed upon at the beginning. In these market conditions, we are seeing vendors come back and say, no, I can't hold prices. So, we do give an opportunity for vendors who have manufacturers supplying their products, they would, if they would request a price increase, they could provide us a letter from the manufacturer of the percentage of price increase, and that price increase can be passed along to the district if it's approved. So, during that renewal period, we are seeing the opportunity for the vendors to come forward with a price increase request, or to decline to renew. And in this case, the vendor agreed to renew at the same terms and conditions, so we're thumbs up with that.
At the same cost, right?
At the same, yes.
Okay, so what about, you mentioned the questionnaire, and that it's done for new contracts. What if the questionnaire were done for, you know, renewal, that type?
We have two different questionnaires, one for renewals and one for new.
Okay, and in, for the renewal one, if they say, well, we can't really match this, and you put it out for bid, does that positive questionnaire have any input on the contract for that person? In other words, if other people decide they're going to, you know, participate, does that give them any?
So it's a clean slate at each time a solicitation goes out. So it's not like we would hold it against somebody because they increased their prices. They would come back with their new prices, and if somebody else came back with a better price, you know, they may not receive an award at the following time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, the next item, Madam Vice Chair is L8. Approval of expenditure for the ITN number N197369RC, which is the locksmith installation services. The questions are, I'd like the total locksmith costs, expenses for each school year over the past five years, and to not include materials. I would like separate material costs for the same years. I would like that separated out by year and by labor and materials. Please advise how many employees working for the district that locksmith is in their job description, where they are housed, in the locksmith maintenance department, or where, who are those employees working on? So today, I have Mr. Frederick Ross, our Executive Director over capital operation planning and project management.
Good afternoon. Recently, Holly sent you an email with that, with a spreadsheet with all that locksmith data, so you can review. It's the last five years. One thing I can comment on that, you'll see that all of the expenditure for the outside contracted services is within fiscal year 2021. That was the new requirements for the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Act for securing the schools, and that's when all that expenditure was submitted. Outside of that year, no expenditure was submitted on this contract. Again, this is contract for emergency basis when, or when the work exceeds the current staff. And as it relates to that current staff, there are three individuals with locksmith in their position titles. There are two locksmiths and one lock and hardware specialist, and this team handles those locksmiths in these of the districts, and it's only if and when we go over what they can handle, we do outside contracting. They are supervised by assistant supervisor of maintenance craft, who has additional responsibility outside of locksmith.
Any other questions on that? Any follow-up?
So, yes, so for employees, is that what you said? Right?
Two locksmiths, one lock and hardware specialist, and then they are supervised by assistant supervisor, who has other responsibilities other than locksmiths.
Crafts, maintenance crafts, and that's other, not just locksmiths, but it's just that work.
Correct. So really, three dedicated staff, the only locksmith activities.
So, isn't there someone also being trained? Or is that included, the someone that's being trained?
I have no knowledge of anyone being trained. These are the three in those positions.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I have the, I have all four of their names, and so there's four, actually. And then that, and then there's the, Mr. James, the supervisor, right?
There is a supervisor over master crafts as well.
That's five. That's five. So my concern is that we have a locksmith department, and I don't see the need for this contract, and I won't be supporting this, I won't be supporting this renewal. Thank you. Especially after $10 million that they received last year for installation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right, item L10. This is the approval of the revised Phase 1 pre-construction budget estimate for the Riverdale High School renovation. The question was, please explain why sales tax money cannot be used? Why can't sales tax money be used upfront? When agenda items are referred to, please provide specific previous documents as part of current information. And we have Ms. Kelly Letcher again. Welcome back.
Hello. Okay, so sales tax money can be used and will be used for parts of Riverdale. So what we've done is, you remember the new legislation that passed, that in order to keep with the student, cost per student stations, we have to do a COPS. So, the ISOP committee, when we met with them, was having grave concerns about so much debt being put into the, into the sales tax, and then the last, you know, couple of years of the sales tax not being used anything for debt. So we realigned our debt so that we could use sales tax, but we weren't limiting it to the timeframe of the sales tax. So we go out for longer debt, and while we have sales tax, we can pay off portions of that debt, and then use another funding source after that to complete that payment. So sales tax is being, that is part of what we're using to pay this, and then we'll switch to another funding source after the sales tax. It's just not making it, so we have to stay within the sales tax limit, which increases the amount of debt for that timeframe.
Okay, so can I make this really basic so I can understand? We'll go to kindergarten.
Okay.
Okay. So, we decide to build or do renovations, and we take out COPS to pay for it?
Correct.
Which is a debt?
Correct.
And we decide to take a portion of that and pay it off with the sales tax?
Yes.
After the sales tax is done, whatever remains of that debt, we have to find other funding sources to pay that?
Correct.
Okay. Leads me to another conversation, but not today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, and then there was a second part to that, asking about providing previous documents?
Yeah, basically, what I was saying, when I pulled that up on the weekend to look at it, the new, what do you call it, proposal was there?
Mm-hmm.
And it referred to a date. And all I'm saying is, can we just, if we had both documents, because I had to go and find it and then print it, not that I shouldn't have to do that.
Yes.
But I'm just saying, to have it right there, because then, the only real change was that moving of the fields. And I see my friend standing there waiting to discuss the moving of the fields.
Yeah, so it is in there, it's just not on the external board docs. If you go in through the internal board docs, it's under the administrative portion on the bottom, which gives you all of the previous documents that were approved and come before the board. So it's on the internal version, not the external version.
And I'm saying, for the public as well, transparency, we're making this change. To have both of them right there would just be, you know, real simple and less.
And I'll let Mr. Frederick handle that one. Mr. Ross?
You're passing that off too easily.
Yeah, I can check with staff and see if we can post that externally as well.
Yeah, just to have it up there. And, well, I don't know if you can answer this part, but when you looked at the two, the $299,000 for moving the fields, can, and you may have to call my other friend.
I think I'm going to need Scott for that.
To come up, but that was the question I had. And did we not plan that in the beginning, that, in the overall plan, that we were going to move the fields? And, yeah. I'm sorry. You could have started earlier. You know I was going to call you because I saw you.
Dr. Savage, board members. Scott Riegenbacher, Director of Construction. Dr. Bernier? The $299,000 is a request, and the vehicle right now is the Phase 1 approval. We haven't gotten into Phase 2, which is a GMP.
Right.
We're in the process of doing the onsite work, which we'd like to accomplish over the summer, but that GMP won't be available for about two, two and a half more months. In order to get this work and do something this summer, I had to get $299,000 to relocate a practice field for the school. So we got the county to take out one softball field. We're going to move that practice in order to have some timeframe for the grass to become established, so they can use it this summer. I have to act now. Otherwise, I'd push the entire school program a full year back.
Okay, so, is this something, and I'm not pointing a finger, I'm just asking for understanding, when the project was decided in the very beginning and planned, was that something that was already in there?
Funny you should ask that, because the project didn't get decided what we were doing only to a month. But like every other project, I'm given the football, and I've got to make magic happen. So my team is making magic happen. So in order to have football practice, not destroy their permanent field, which is what happens when you don't have a practice field, your permanent field gets destroyed and it's useless for the season, we're trying to get some work done this summer, which is the major parking lot renovation work in the front of the school.
Right.
So it's a multi-year project, but no, this couldn't have been determined because we didn't even have, remember the charrettes we brought forward to you? There was about four different charrettes as to what we were going to do? That only got decided about two months ago, if I'm, maybe a month and a half, two months ago. So.
And just out of curiosity, where, so the football field is here, and all the portables and stuff are here, are you looking at putting it north of the football field?
This is where the second softball field is in the back. They have two softball fields there, so we're commandeering one softball field. It's back behind the portables, and that will become the football practice field, but I need these months to get that sprigs, the grass to grow, so that it can be utilized. And that allows me then, when we get into our Phase 2A, which will be the foundations and structure and the offsite work, that allows me to go in there and take that area where the practice field is now, coming into the next phase, which will be over the summer.
And make it a football practice field?
I'm making a football practice field now with the $299,000. That frees up the area, so when the GMP comes in, in about two and a half months, I can go right to foundation and structural work onsite, get that done over the summer as well. So it's about not pushing a lot of the site work into a whole nother year. It's trying to advance and get the practice field done, so I can commandeer the area now once the GMP for Phase 2A comes on, to get that work immediately going.
And I will make an appointment to go walking with you, just to see.
Sure thing. Going to give you a shovel.
Hey, as long as I got a hard, I got a shovel at home.
I hear you.
I'll bring my own shovel.
All right. So that's the reason for that. We're just trying to make best use of this coming summer when the school is shut down.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good day. And we found out 2014 to 2016, we're trying to nail down the wrestling building age.
Oh, thank you.
Insurance shows it on the books at 14, yet we have FISH that shows 2016, so suffice to say, between 14 and 16, the wrestling building was commissioned.
So, real quick, because I was like, I don't recall a new wrestling building, but I know, so I've had parents complain that the air conditioning wasn't working. So that's why I was curious how old the AC would be then, when they went there.
We can find out about that, I don't have that answer, but that was a building that was funded with the community funds and built out there in that year. So it is not part of the renovation, there was nothing that stated that had renovation need in that building, but I can certainly get with maintenance and ask them to look into the air conditioning.
Yeah, so, and this may not be a question to you, but so how does that work if a community wants to build a wrestling auditorium, or how does that work exactly with the school and fundraising and so forth? And how does that work? Like, and then, another question, if the AC is an issue, you know, does that become our issue through tax, you know, are the sales tax fixing the air conditioning or maintaining, you know, where does that, how does that all work if it was?
You've got about six questions and one.
I know, and I'm sorry.
I'll peel it like a banana.
But I was just curious.
Number one, yes, they can fundraise. They have to follow building code, they have to follow all of our processes for building that building and getting it inspected. Number two, once it's on our site, then it goes on our books in FISH, so it has to be registered in FISH.
Thank you.
In terms of the maintenance, sometimes Kelly will say, how are you going to sustain that if we give you permission to build something like that? How are you going to sustain those payments? So that becomes a finance, so.
Okay.
Yes, we maintain them once we take them, unless there's opportunities with finance where they can show they can maintain that on their own.
Great.
Ms. Gittens?
I know. Did you see? Did you all see? It's like, Ms. Gittens. Yes, ma'am, she gave me that teacher. Okay, anyway, a quick question, though. So this is Phase 1, and are we looking at anything else coming up in the other phases that are, that's not out there now that would increase the price?
Sounds like somebody wants them. Erica didn't, no, I'm just teasing. Now, we're in the phase now where we're designing. So as much as I'd like to come for one Phase 2, which is an entire design and a GMP, it's going to be multiple GMPs.
But that's what I don't understand. So in other words, like, if I was going to build a house, and you tell me it's going to cost $200,000, and the first phase, you need $100,000 from me, and I give you that, and you start building, and you say, well, for Phase 2, it's going to take you an extra $100,000, so the house is going to cost you three.
Okay. Well, let me give you an answer to that quickly. In your, your own point, I get exactly what you're saying. I can delay this school for a year and have all the drawings done 100%. It's going to push your five-year plan a year, and it's going to cost you more because you're waiting a year.
Okay.
Because of, you know, this is similar to Benita Springs High School went back a year because there were delays. There were delays in the community and the permitting and so on and so forth. There comes a point where, if you want 100% documents, which is what our original phasing, the process was, Phase 1, move right to Phase 2 with a full GMP, that takes at least a year of design time. So if I just got the answer two months ago on what we're doing, I've still got 10 more months before drawing, so basically, the whole summer, the whole fall, everything shifts. months before drawing, so basically the whole summer, the whole fall, everything shifts. So, I'm trying to keep on your five-year timeline. Again, I get the football, I run with it. If all of those steps and processes needed to get that moving on a timeframe don't occur, it's creeping up on me, and I'm the guy that has to make the magic happen, my staff and our design and our team.
Bottom line is, we really, because we're trying to fast-track it, we really don't know that final, where it's gonna be.
That is correct.
That's all I asked you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gettens.
Thank you, Mr. Rickenbacker.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ross.
Mr. Ross, did you have anything else to add to that? I believe those were all the questions that we had today.
You know how quickly they run away?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Agenda items only. Attorney Dupree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School Board Policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the Board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided. Please be advised that the Board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone, per Board Policy 1.11, and may be removed from the chambers. There is one warning. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone, and please follow the staff's direction when lining up. And Madam Chair, let me check how many individuals we have today. And I seem to be having some computer issues.
Six.
Six. Well, the six individuals who've signed up, because I'm not able to open up my cheat sheet.
Let me see if it's popping up for me. Looks like I have it. So, I have them right here, if you want me to.
Thank you.
Show the names. There's Denise Nice, if you want to go ahead.
Go ahead. Denise Nice, Tara Jenner.
Jamie Miller.
Jamie Miller.
Edward Grass.
Edward Grass.
Robert Roper.
Robert Roper.
And Chrissy Divageli.
And Chrissy Divageli. Thank you very much, Dr. Savage.
Can we get the lights on in the back? Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm...
Get the lights on. The lights are not on in the back.
Address it right now.
Thank you for your patience.
Holly is checking.
Thank you. I can't hear you.
Is the best. Denise Nice, Lee County resident. I have been attending school board meetings now for almost a year, and I would have to say that a big concern is the number of parents compared to the number of district staff that are on committees. While I appreciate the presentation that was given today, and I have read thoroughly through every statute and bill that was presented, I get the sense that the end result will be that the district will not change its procedures with regard to the form about the books, but rather to explain to us, the constituents, why you do not have to. I am here to represent parents and community members, and to ask you to look at the composition of all of your committees, and to involve many more parents, as well as community members, from all cultures and all walks of life. In fact, I'm asking you to go to a lottery system, so more people have an opportunity to participate on the various committees, because many parents and community members will otherwise not get a chance. It could serve as a cultural change to have a multitude of people at the table learning to compromise with each other. I believe that, given the opportunity, people were.
Ms. Nice, I think your microphone just went off, so... It's not her fault.
They froze the timer, so...
Uh-huh. Oh, so I think.
Here comes the new one.
I'm not even gonna start over. Just kidding. Okay. I believe that, given the opportunity, people working together can reach solutions that will be workable for everybody. The Parents' Bill of Rights is a bill for all parents, and all parents should have the right to have their voices heard. I am requesting that, instead of the status quo and asking parents to submit a form to complain about one book in an attempt to have it removed, that a committee with equal number of parents and school district members be put on a committee to solve the problem together. The Board has been asked on numerous occasions to place the Parents' Rights Bill in a place in the Code of Conduct where it is guaranteed that parents will see it so that they know their rights. That hasn't happened yet today. There was a whole conversation with regard to where you could find the link to object to the books. Overall, I am asking for a change of culture and to create a culture of mutual respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi, Tara Jenner. You always state that the best interest of the children is your priority. Removal of challenged materials should occur immediately upon a challenge until the review process is complete, as this is the most child-focused and minimizes any repercussions for the children, as well as the district from law enforcement and state attorney action under the obscenity laws should a book be proven to be obscene. This does not violate the rights protected by the First Amendment. As noted by Mr. Patrica, there are many other locations and resources from which children and parents may access the materials pending review. Just simply state, this book is pending review, and people will know to go elsewhere. The process listed in the statute is a minimum requirement, not the only way to approach things. It is disingenuous to state that there have been no requests for review of books. That is a logistic cover-your-ass, rather than looking at the intent of the statute requiring a mechanism for challenging materials. The email with the list of concerning books was mentioned was clearly a challenge and should have reasonably been approached as such. The responsibility and burden for making sure any obscene, non-instructional material are not accessible to students' lives with the Board. Under 847.012, the state obscenity laws through the schools are limited to instructional material that are designed to serve as a major tool for the instruction of a subject or course. That is not a blanket exemption from all material available in the libraries. To imply all items in the library meet the instructional standard is patently absurd. Purient interest refers to items that are erotic, lascivious, abnormal, unhealthy, degrading, shameful, or morbidly interested, showing a morbid interest in nudity, sex, or excretion. Potentially offensive examples include sexual acts, normal or perverted, actual or simulated, masturbation, excruciating functions, lewd exhibition of genitals, and sadomasochistic sexual abuse. The lack of serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific values based on a reasonable person's standard is the rule under Miller. It's not utterly without redeeming social value test. SCOTUS actually rejected that standard as being too broad, and clarified that was to be formed, that was, the standard was to be based on a forum community and not a national standard. The review committee makeup, as listed, is not representative of the forum community, as it is too school-district-heavy and not representative of the parents, the communities, and those who are a greater percentage of the community, more than the 50%, Ms. Nice, you even suggested. It should also be noted that there's a November 20, 2001 DOJ opinion that specifically addresses the Miller test, and says it's clearly stated the standard.
Thank you, Ms. Jenner.
Thank you, Ms. Jenner. Good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon. Oh, of course it's not. Hello, hello? I just need to be louder, I guess. That's not nervous at all. Good afternoon. My name is Jamie Miller, and I am part of the Florida Citizens Alliance Kids First Team. I want to make sure to say thank you to the curriculum team for their presentation about the concerns for instructional or media materials. I also want to make sure it's understood that Florida Citizens Alliance is nonpartisan, so in no way are our efforts a means to impose political beliefs on others. The mission of FLCA is to improve Florida's K-12 education by uniting empowering teachers, students, and parents. With that said, I have concerns. The use of the word "purient" on your First Amendment slide means to encourage excessive interest in sexual matters. So, in order for material to be obscene and unprotected under the First Amendment, it must encourage excessive interest in sexual matters. I have concerns that most of the books in question are purient. Specifically, Toni Morrison's "The Bluest Eye," it includes passages about incest and child rape, and is on the American Library Association's annual list of most commonly banned books. There are currently 46 copies in eight of your high schools. On pages 84, 130, 147, 162, 166, and 181, there are graphic passages about sexual encounters with children. How does a book like this not encourage excessive interest in sexual matters? And I have it written out right here. As Ms. Patrica stated, and I rarely agree with her, there are parameters or restrictions set on each student's Chromebook, so that they may not access explicit websites via district property. Why not implement the same parameters for books? Our initiative isn't about book banning, though. This is about protecting children from being exposed to harmful materials that their parents are not informed about. This presentation was the first time I heard about the access that I, as a parent, have to Launchpad. Why provide just an opt-out? This process should be opt-in only to protect children from being exposed to explicit materials without parental consent. Where can we find a solution? We would be more than willing to sit down with Dr. Spiro and team to formulate a plan that satisfies all parties. Can we create or revise your committee to include parents, which include team members from our Kids First Team, to provide feedback? There is a time and place for children to be exposed to explicit materials and to have certain conversations. The time is when the parents say so, and the place is at home, at the discretion and supervision of the parents or guardians. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Good afternoon, Board. Dr. Edward Grass. First of all, thank you for letting me see your faces, so I know who is talking. Dropping of a mask is a good thing. As a group and as individuals, we're not here to censor books. We are protecting our children, as we would from alcohol, guns, drugs, and sex. The district itself censors many materials that come in through the doors. We find that this is the process we want to follow as well. There have been several key issues discussed this afternoon, and I find it more than coincidental that one of them is that this presentation, the PowerPoint on screening the curriculum, preempted Pastor Roper's presentation, which was scheduled for last week and then canceled, so that it'll be presented this evening. I don't know if this was on purpose, or whatever reason was behind it. Does this now place the Board in good stead with parents who object to the pornographic materials that now are exposed in the schools and the district? Does it cover accountability when the school says, look, what we've done to clear this material from the schools? Time will tell. The second coincidence was, if I may use a political term that's common today, the intersectionality of mental health, the media we've been discussing in the schools, and SEL. All of these things serve to what I consider denigrate the students' mental health. There has been no dialogue correlating the material in the district and the behavior of the school district itself is contributing to the mental health or the lack of, of the teenagers in this district. I have a very acute personal awareness of dealing with teens who have attempted suicide. I've had the sad task to pronounce the ones who've actually completed their attempts and are no longer with us. We're all responsible for the condition of these students. What we present to them in this district controls what they think. And a lot of what they think is what they read, what they hear from their peers, and what they hear from their teachers. Do you really think that supporting an LGBTQ movement, that according to this quote from the Trevor Project, in 2019 survey on LGBTQ youth mental health, youth respondents identified with more than 100 sexual orientations and more than 100 gender identities? Being a teenager is a mental health issue, and we're certainly not helping that out by throwing all these confusing things at them.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Christine Divageli. First, I actually would like to say thank you to all of you ladies up there, because you guys did a very good job with the mental health conversation. I watched that on my way here today, and while I was giving, well, just at home while I was doing something. And I was actually really proud of you guys. You did a really good job. I, you know, thank you for that. It was a very healthy conversation, and, you know, it gives me hope that perhaps we can have more of those. Moving on to Policy 2.18, I have some issues with this. It was mentioned that the Ad Hoc Committee is monthly or as needed. What constitutes as needed? And is this like, I just would like to know what constitutes that. In regards to the committee makeup, I'd like to know where the parents are, in that big long list of people. I didn't see parents anywhere. I heard someone mention that the schools pick books based on their students. I'd like a little bit of clarification on that, or a broader definition, or... Then we were also told that parents were told that they can flag certain books, and the kids will not be able to get, you know, to see those books. What's stopping my child from going into the media center, grabbing a book that I have flagged, and reading it right there in the media center? Are there any provisions in place to stop my kids from doing that? I'd also like to know, the building principals. We were told that the district is approving the books, but then the building principals are approving the actual list of books. Who is it? Who actually is ordering the books? Is it the district, or is it the building principals? And who's reviewing them? Next one is, in regards to reading and interest levels, I would like it to be explained to me how "Killing Mr. Griffin" is at an elementary reading level, because we know that this book is currently at Trafalgar Elementary and Remus C. Page. It's also in a bunch of high schools, because it's about the premeditated murder of a teacher by their students. Then I'd like to know why the book "Kite Runner" is appropriate reading material for anyone, especially a middle-schooler. When this book talks... especially a middle schooler, when this book talks about child trafficking, child rape, and murder. I'm gonna really quickly move on with the last forty seconds that I have onto the locksmith because that is the very first experience I ever had with you people was the locksmith contract. And I would just like to say this, that there has been consistent controversy pertaining to the locksmith contract and millions of dollars have already been spent on labor alone. Parts and tools were supplied by the district, which means that we, the people, paid for those too. What about, I'd like to know what about the complaint from former employee Jim Carrasco? Has this been addressed yet, especially specifically in regards to this contract? Thank you.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to speak about the challenge to instructional material presentation that was just made. It says it's on. Can we? Maybe I need to scrunch down? Can I start again? I'll scrunch down. My name is Robert Roper. I'd like to talk about the challenge to instructional material presentation that was made. This presentation was a beautiful example of, uh, a platitude policy that has very little to do with the reality of the issue. Thank you. I thank God for you, Ms. Gittens. Today you asked the pertinent questions. You did a great job. Just because a law allows for you to do something does not require you to do it. If the text analysis process that we just saw is working, today shows how woefully inadequate the process is for Ms. Patrica protecting the first amendment. What a dramatic way to make a presentation look like it hit the mark. They even said they restrict by age, by topic, and by content in their own presentation. The question is by what standard? And your point about the schools protecting kids against material that they can get outside the school was disingenuous at best. Bring in the drugs, the alcohol, the tobacco, and hard carb porn because they can get all that outside the schools anyway. Does all this text analysis, book review include finding other materials that are better without the objectionable materials that maybe do not include killing a teacher or sex with animals or, uh, using a grown man using ice cream to get a, a little girl to spread her legs? Can we look for something better than what we have? Does that, is that part of the process? I'm gonna end with this. You guys talked about this book today. It's perfectly normal. You review, you removed this book, you censored it. I'm gonna show you how the whole process is flawed and has failed and has fallen flat on its face. This book, I found out just before I came here, is in your libraries. It's not The Stork. It's written by the same author, illustrated by the same illustrator as this book. It's the companion book to it, but it's written for four-year-olds. Here's pictures of naked people in it. Here's pictures of people making love in a bed for four-year-olds. This proves to me that all this access and computer stuff is platitudes that doesn't meet the reality of what's happening in the schools today.
Madam Chair, that concludes the public comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing your opinions with us. We are listening. Okay. Next on the agenda is good of the order. Board members, does anyone have anything for good of the order this afternoon? Okay, we'll move right into board member reports and we'll start with Ms. Morgan.
Um, yes, I'd like to compliment Mary Grace Romo on the first meeting I was able to attend, uh, the first, my first opportunity to attend, um, the Head Start Policy Council meeting. Um, she's changed it up quite a bit. It's very parent-friendly, uh, in terms of the content provided and the way it's presented and how she does the data. Um, and I also want to mention just for the public consumption, um, they are considering moving three classrooms from Colonial Elementary, which are housed in portables, to new cla- the new classrooms at James Stevens that are undersubscribed. Um, and then I, my, my last comment about, uh, Ms. Romo would be that I'm also hearing from the public and staff that they really appreciate the work that she's doing in her capacity as, uh, head of Head Start. And I have one other comment. Occasionally, we are accused by members of the public of engaging in unethical and illegal behavior. Sadly, this has proven to be true recently. Best case, a member of the leadership team is undermining the work of the board and leadership team. Worst case, this individual is acting in unethical and perhaps illegal ways to interfere with the leadership and governance obligations of the board. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, I have a couple of things and then I will do the rest this evening. Um, first of all, it's Black History Month and I'm black, so therefore that I, thank you. No, I'm just teasing. No, uh, the people were saying, you know, about me wearing the, um, the outfit. It's my heritage and, and I was talking to Ms. Fisher in the back and, and saying, you know, maybe I should just wear this in at least once every other month or something and other months as well. So I will, I will definitely do that. On the bad hair days, it's wonderful. But anyway, um, a couple of things. One, I sent you all the finance committee, um, information and I'll give you time to look over that and see if you have any questions. Very, very, very good presentation, um, and the information is on there and I'll talk more about that later. But a couple of things about the meeting. One, um, if i- in these committee meetings, the people that are allowed to be remote, the, uh, equipment is just not good because the people that are on by, uh, digitally have trouble hearing. And I think it's a matter of getting, um, no offense to staff at all, you're doing what you're supposed to do. The thing is that we need some additional mics, for example. There should be an external mic that, uh, either sit it in the middle of the room, on a table. I know we used to do that before, but somehow not, um, let's say reprimanding or punishing the people that for whatever reason are not able to attend that particular meeting. They should be able to hear us and we should be able to hear them. Um, the other thing I want to bring up, I am the liaison on two different committees and it has happened on several occasions that in the meetings that I'm the liaison to, the speakers will stop and say, "I'm sorry, I can't discuss this because there are two board members present." I am asking, uh, the other board members to give the committees the opportunity to do their work. We have assigned a liaison to each committee for that purpose and if we cannot cover information that is necessary because of the board members are on digitally or whatever, it hampers the, the work of the committee. I have no problem with you watching what is going on, listening to what I say. I will say the same thing anywhere, anytime. Um, we are recorded, so the opportunity to hear and to ask questions or to hold my feet to the fire for something that you think I should not have said, um, i- is available to you. But I am asking on behalf of the members at the, the different committees to please give them an opportunity to thoroughly do their work with the liaison for that committee without, uh, uh, the interruption of saying we cannot. And it's happened on several occasions. We can't discuss this because there's two board members. So I just wanted to bring that up. Um, a couple of other things, um, in looking at the, the, um, uh, weekly report that came out, and I just want to say thank you to all those, um, Ms. Matthews, Holly Matthews, and Dr. Carlin, that I know you guys must be scuffling every week to get all of this stuff together and make sure we get all the information we need. So I want to publicly say thank you, uh, for that information and I know we're on the cusp of doing it a little bit differently and I'm excited about that. Um, but one of the things I noticed in the vacancies, the way it was listed was each job, um, in chunks by district and it's, that was different from before. It's more detailed and I'm grateful for that. And as I counted up the numbers, um, in the east zone, there were seventy-four vacancies. South, there were thirty-nine, and west, there were twenty-eight. Seventy-four, thirty-nine, twenty-eight. Seventy-four, thirty-nine, twenty-eight. To me, there's an issue. And I, I know we're working on it, but I keep saying, we're in a crisis and we're hemorrhaging. And I have been sharing with you all, uh, some of the emails. I spoke with a, a group of teachers on the weekend, on the long weekend, and they're just up to here as to what to do. And I, and not blaming anybody, we all know that the elephant is in the room, but we, do we know that that elephant is raising his, uh, thing and making noises, okay? Because we really, really need to do something. And just like I was saying when Mr. Dodig was up there, we need to toot our own horn. If we are doing things to help these teachers, that needs to be front and center with some of these other, uh, things that we're doing in the community. That needs to be first on our webpage to say, "Teachers, guess what we're doing? This is what we're doing. Teachers, last week, the district covered fifty classes in, in classrooms so that you didn't have to." It's the message and it's the way we present it. It's how we communicate it. Yes, we're doing wonderful things, but are we selecting the right wonderful things at the right time to put forward to the public? Um, I, I am extremely concerned about the seventy-four, thirty-nine, twenty-eight. Some other things, and I'll bring them up later, uh, this evening, and I think that's it for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I just have a few things. Uh, I just want to say that I attended the, well, many of us attended the Golden Apple finalist event, which was really great. We had a hundred teachers of distinction, thirty, uh, golden apples. And the process, I just really wanted to put it out there too, the process that they have to go through to get there is very strenuous and, um, I hope for more and I was encouraging some of the, the teachers who were already, um, golden apples, as I, I see happens at the Villas because they get two, they go in, they encourage two more, and they help them through that process. And so now these two are, now there's gonna be four of them encouraging the next group to come in. So if, by them encouraging, it helps them get through that process, uh, and they will be going through all of that this week as well. Also, um, I had the opportunity to stop by Cape Coral. The police department had a, an event there, chill with the police, um, and many of those, most of the people that were out there were our SO, SROs, uh, student resource officers that were, uh, in our elementary schools and middle school. And I believe most of them that, that I did speak to, they were definitely elementary. And the, um, conversation was really great and the opportunity that they had to, uh, show the kids that they are there for them, uh, also how they spoke on the kids as these are our kids and the, the love that they, that they shared that they have with their students and that, yes, they called them their students and it's, um, they wanted to make sure that, uh, I understood that it's a, a joint partnership with them, but it was really good to see how they were out there with, with the kids. And in twenty minutes, they went through hundreds and hundreds of hot dogs, so those kids were really hungry. But that was, that was a fun event. Also, um, I, oh, going back to the golden apple, I wanted to give another shout out to our east, uh, East Lee County Culinary. Those kids are amazing and the talent that they have, and I can't wait for them to come of age to be in my workforce, uh, because they are just, um, their heart is in there and they are just very, very talented and I just really appreciate the chef, the principal, and the students. Now the students are, um, every time they have an event, all the students want to participate, so it's just, it's, it's really beginning to be really great for them. And they have a cafeteria, not a cafeteria, but a dining room that they're opening, so I can't wait for all that for them. So I'm really excited for those kids. Also, um, another thing that's taken place in Fort Myers, the CRA is, uh, actually, we keep talking about this all the time, about our teachers, our staff, uh, having, uh, being able to, uh, live in attainable housing. Uh, they are getting ready to build one in Fort Myers, central location. I believe it's three, I'm not sure which page you look on, but it's either three thirty or three thirty-six, uh, units and the, um, it's gonna be between a thousand and thirteen-hundred for, uh, the rent. So they're really trying to, uh, promote this for workforce base so that everybody working and I, when you read all the material, it tells you the busboy at Red Lobster, the person driving, uh, the bus, they have like a whole slew of people. But just the, um, it's gonna be a, it's definitely a beautiful property that's, uh, coming and it looks like it's gonna be done within the year. So that's something that's a good thing for us too because we can direct our, you know, our people to, to go there as well. So I think that's really good. And then my last, uh, thing would be, I had the opportunity to spend some time in a food service, uh, last week, which was interesting, uh, and, and I, I'm so sorry that I don't have the gentleman's name who created this great inventory, um, sheet, which I wish I had, uh, and in a moment's notice, they can see everything across the whole district of what we have in store. And when they order the food for the whole district, they can see if there's a shortage and at a moment's notice, our team here, and I have to give them props because that's amazing, in a moment's notice, they're calling and getting other food in here, um, you know, from Amazon or whoever. So when you go in this room, you see all these boxes that are already like, they're stacked up with all the school's name on it. So they're trying to make sure, and what I had suggested that they might do is because of the fact that the schools are, uh, learning, um, on Friday what their inventory is, so when they're coming up with not having the tacos or the pizzas for Ms. Jevanelli's granddaughter, they, they get their product so they know what that product is for that week. So if they were able to, and, and Dr. Savage, I'm sharing this with you because I did share that with, um, Ms. Candace over there, if they were able to, the managers of each of the schools, once they know what their product is and their inventory, perhaps do a, a menu for that next week for their school. Because we understand right now because of, I mean, we are seeing it in our establishments as well, but I understand that the process in the grocery stores are the same way. We're trying to make sure that we are, uh, filling up all those boxes, you know, that needs to be in those schools. But if they could create their own menu for that weekend, put it out there on their website, that'll, I think will make parents feel a little bit better on what their children are eating for that week. I know it's gonna take a minute, but I, in speaking with them, they said that that's something that, that could possibly happen. And again, it's like there's, I think it's sixty-seven schools. Am I wrong? Sixty-seven cafeterias? How many?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-four.
Say it out loud.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. Eighty-eight. Thank you. I can't see you back there. Okay, eighty-eight, to me, it's like eighty-eight individual restaurants, just like a cruise liner, you know? Everybody has their own dining room. This is their dining room. It's their restaurant. So to me, it's like, okay, you have ownership of that, make it, you know, make it yours. And I think if we can do that and, uh, give them, because I know that when they, the kids go through the lines, they know every single child that's going through that line. They, they love on those kids and they, they know who they are and what they can and cannot eat. So I think that, um, I, I just really think that we really need- So I think that, I just really think that we really need to give them that support and appreciate, you know, all that they're doing. And that was really interesting to me. So thank you so much for letting me do that, Dr. Savage. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Patrica?
So does anyone know why it's appropriate to wear a tutu today?
No.
Right. Oh-two, twenty-two, 2022. So I toured Edgewood Academy today, and everybody was wearing tutus, and that's why everybody was wearing tutus.
Oh, tutus. I'm glad you didn't tell, I'm glad you didn't tell us to do that.
I thought it was really funny, because the assistant principal had completely forgotten that she was wearing a tutu and a crown. And she was having a serious conversation. It was really hard to take her seriously. Anyways, wonderful, wonderful visit out there. The last time I saw Principal Nader, she was at Orangewood. And, you know, she chose to go there, and the school that she left desperately did not want her to go and fought to keep her there. She really did a great job. Apparently, when she arrived, absence was a huge issue. It was a cultural issue at the school. And her assistant principal worked really hard to create an environment called FOMO, fear of missing out. So now the kids want to go to school because they're afraid they're going to miss out on something if they're not at school. And the kids that are absent on a regular basis get a call, and, you know, the parents are told the child is missed, and they're instilling that FOMO sort of environment over there. I thought that was great. I was able to go into three different classrooms, and I have to say the teachers' names because each one of them blew me away. Noel Shields, Sarah Wechter, and Nicole Cardnell. Noel Shields was an ESOL classroom. Apparently, there were some students who were having difficulty sort of making the grade with regard to testing. So they brought Noel Shields in, who is a teacher-coach, is that the right phrase?
Go with that.
Something like that. She teaches half the day, and she coaches the rest of the day. So I believe she's a teacher-coach. The energy in that room was unbelievable. It made me want to go back to school. She must be exhausted at the end of the day. Ms. Wechter, same thing in the fifth grade. And then Nicole Cardnell, it was the early fives classroom. The kids were like this tall. But every classroom I went into, the kids were focused on the task at hand. They were having fun, and they were engaged, and they were acting like children, and they were focused on the task at hand. It was really, really cool. I need to bring up with my team, meaning the school board, the educating, the public versus the elected versus appointed thing. We have all received that letter. Are we in a position where we can approve that letter this evening? If so, I will make a motion for approval. Hello? Anyone? I'm sorry? I don't know. If this is the one I read a while ago, okay. I can't, it's not clear. I don't know if you're talking about something you sent out today or this thing I read. 9:39 this morning. Okay. It's essentially the memo just made into a letter form. Okay.
And it also included Ms. Gittens' comments in there, too.
Right. And there are a couple typos that I'll go over with you, but we'll just fix those.
Who was it from?
I'm sorry?
Who was it from?
The board.
Kathy Bruno. It would have came from Kathy.
Oh, the email. I'm sorry. I thought you meant who's the letter from. The email is from Attorney DePree Bruno.
Thank you. Okay.
The board doesn't have any.
All right. Are you finished, Ms. Patrica?
No, I'm waiting for a consensus on sending out the letter and whether I should bring that as a motion before the board this evening.
Ms. Fisher, are we looking at the one with the red or? Because I see the one with red and red.
The one with the track changes included some of the comments made by Ms. Gittens.
Okay.
And then it was incorporated into another letter. You had to take that Adobe and put it into the other letter. And a shout out to Jen Schaefer for doing that, because I know that was a project to pass.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
Okay. And I will be totally transparent. I have not had a chance to look at it again since this morning. So all I can say is that, you know, between now and this afternoon, I can take a look at it, but I need to do that before I can say.
All right. I'll bring it up in two weeks. I'll bring it back to the table in two weeks.
Well, and just, I wanted to ask Attorney Bruno, you had said something about the bill itself, and can you maybe just?
In terms of where we stand right now?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about where we stand in terms of elected versus appointed? Is that what you're?
Yes, yes.
So at this point, the House bill has passed. And the last time I looked with regards to the Senate bill, it's still in process. That's all I can say. And I know that, my understanding is that the Senate would like to know what the board's position is on this. I don't know, I haven't spoken to any senators. I can just tell you that's what's out there.
And other school boards, have they weighed in?
Other school boards? This is specifically for Lee County.
That's right. I forgot about that.
Says nothing to do with anybody else except for us.
I forgot.
So no, they did not.
Okay.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so given Attorney DePree Bruno's comment, I think we ought to do this tonight.
Yes.
So I think it's incumbent upon us to read it and be ready to discuss it tonight.
And this was sent in word form, so if anyone has corrections, you can make it right into the document. We can track changes, and then I can submit, you know, finalized copy to everyone for review.
Okay, I'll make that motion tonight. I'll finish with my comments, if that's okay.
Yes, please. Can I have one, just one regarding that as well? So when you're making your motion, also include, how is that going to be signed?
And also, who is it going to be sent to?
That's right, yes.
Signed and sent to, please.
Okay. So another thing I did was I went out to South to watch the girls' basketball play against Naples, and they won in the sectionals, I want to say, of the FHSAA girls' basketball tournament. I went to watch Amanda Potts, who's been all over the news. But boy, was I delighted to, an entire team of good basketball players. It was amazing to me. I really expected it to be a one-man show or a one-woman show, and there wasn't a player on that court that didn't know how to play really well. So she might bring out the best in them, and she might be the star, but that team is going to be good for years to come. I was really, really impressed. If I may direct a question to you, Dr. Savage, it's come to my attention that some of our SROs are carrying new weapons. And I'm wondering whether that is jurisdiction-specific. I'm wondering whether it's a new best practice. And if it is a new best practice, should we be requesting that all of our SROs do it? I just want a little bit more background on why we're doing it and if it should be scaled up. Make sense?
Absolutely. I'll get that information as soon as possible to the board.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And then regarding Sunshine at Advisory Committee meetings, it's my understanding that more than one board member can attend, as long as only one speaks. And, go ahead, I'll let you address that.
Sunshine is open, Sunshine is open. The board advisory committees are open to the public, which means anybody can go to the board advisory committee. The thing is that board members do not want to engage with each other in those advisory committees. That would be a violation. And what we're doing now is anytime that a board, at least two or more board members are going to attend any event, we are posting that, just so the public knows that there may be two or more board members at this particular event. So that is posted for the board advisory committees and anything else that we are aware of.
I was invited last minute to attend the finance advisory committee meeting by a constituent, so I didn't want to say no, and I didn't want to say I'll watch it later. I wanted him to physically see me present there, which is why I went. And there were, Mr. Daley did say several times, "These are things I can't say because there are board members in the room, and these are subjects of bargaining." But there were no Sunshine concerns brought up at that meeting. I just wanted to make that, I wanted to make that really, really clear.
May I please respond to that?
I'm not done with my comments yet.
I'm just saying, in reference to your statement, there were several times that it was said that there are two board members here, and we cannot discuss this.
Okay. So then that needs to be clarified for our advisory committees.
We'll clarify that. So just to be clear, we have one board member who serves as the liaison, and that board member discusses things with the committee, discusses things with the chair. But these meetings are open to the public, which means anybody can attend. We just want to make sure that board members do not engage.
And they're in Sunshine.
And they're in Sunshine, they're properly noticed, because right now, we always say there may be two or more board members in attendance, so they are properly noticed as well, and there's minutes taken, et cetera.
And then in terms of Black History Month, Ms. Gittens, I would like to follow up on what you said, and invite you to please do wear that more often, because Black History should not be just the month of February. It should be every day, all day, in our schools. And keeping it just to the month of February doesn't make a whole heck of a lot of sense to me. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Mrs. Jevonelli?
Thank you. Well, I actually have had a busy couple weeks, because I'm part of the Edison Festival Light, and we did the children's parade, and we also did the night parade. And I just wanted to say, the participation from our schools was amazing. And I don't know if you're aware, I mean, we had floats, not to mention all the bands that were spectacular, but there were several floats from different schools that were, I'm talking spectacular. And I was amazed and really didn't know, I started counting how many, you know, schools were participating. So I just wanted to say thank you, because that's can be an expensive task to do, but it actually was a great representation of our schools. And I think it's just, was really, really nice, and I really enjoyed that. So I just wanted to thank all the schools that participated, and I would love to see more participation. But it is expensive to do. So the other thing, I've had people come to me regarding the custodial staff and the difficulty in keeping, retaining that, the staff, and the pay is so low. And if that's something, this is through to the superintendent, you know, if we could put that on our list of needs, I know the list is long, but I just think we, you know, we have to do better, because, you know, you pay for what you get. So if we can pay more, we'll get more. Then, oh, back to a couple questions regarding the education materials that are used in the classroom. Do the parents get a copy of that, you know, like orientation, so they know what the students are going to be, I mean, like, I don't, you know, of the materials beforehand, so they're kind of aware of what, am I asking the question right?
Yeah, I'm happy to give a more comprehensive answer, but the line share is that at the beginning of a course, usually the kids, for the syllabus, if there are specific planned instructional materials, that they're going to be reading like a novel, so forth, they may get that. In terms of like a full listing of like everything that might be in the classroom library, that may not be the case. And you have a lot of books that revolve through that piece, so that may not be. However, folks who've spent a lot of time on this matter, I'm happy to have them provide a more robust answer in writing to the board, so you have that.
And I was just thinking, like, mostly like in the elementary stages, you know, what materials, educational materials, are parents aware of what their child's going to be learning for the year? And then I have to go to food, because I, over the weekend, I received pictures and calls about the food, and I sent it to Dr. Savage, you know, but I was told it was a cold potato with cold cheese and cold meat and a cold, all in a box. So they prepared the food and put it in the fridge, and then gave it out. And kids aren't eating it. So we're wasting money on food. But my question really is, why are we not utilizing the kitchens anymore and cooking the food and preparing? Like, why can't we get back to what a cafeteria was? I mean, we've remodeled all these kitchens, and now they're dormant. They're sitting, you know, you're using refrigerators, and I just don't understand. I'm not really understanding what is going on there.
I'm happy to have Ms. Messenger get with Ms. Blay provide a response, just to kind of what is our general approach to how do we utilize our kitchens? What are the challenges with the current, obviously, supply issues? But, you know, certainly a picture's worth a thousand words. A picture, thank you for sending it. Thank you also for letting me know. One of the most important things we know is if there's a school-specific concern, knowing that they are like 88 independent restaurants, they're not fully independent. You know, there are some standardized aspects to it, but there are also, you know, they go through serving lines. It's very important that, you know, if there is a quality concern, we have the ability to follow up with those schools. So anytime you hear it from a constituent or from someone in there, if the kids aren't eating it, that is not, the whole point is so that they won't eat the food, and it should always be presented professionally as well. So we look forward to every opportunity that you bring. Please don't ever stop sending them. If you ever have concerns about the food, send them to us, so we can respond to it and handle what we need to do.
There's nothing green even on their plate, so I was like, my goodness. So, yeah, that's why I thought that. And then I wanted to go to the allergy policy, because I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. And I've spoken to several friends that have worked in the cafeterias of the schools, and some people were really upset over the allergy policy. But what my friends told me is peanut butter's never really gone away. Kids bring it to school in their lunchbox. So this is actually setting, we actually, we're a little late in having a policy, something we should have probably done. And she said, there's always been a table that is allergy-free zone, technically, and, you know, and so I just thought that that's something that I don't think the community's aware, or not everybody's aware. But I'd much prefer eat a peanut butter and jelly than the stuff I sent you. So, you know, I think it's important that we have, I'm glad the peanut butter's back in the schools. So we just have to make sure, and we have the allergy policy in place to protect those students that can't be near it or eat it. So I think it's a great thing, and I just wanted to acknowledge that and let people know that the peanut butter has always, has not left the schools, even when the schools weren't serving it, parents were. So it's important to acknowledge that. And I think that is all I have, I think, just to touch base on those things. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll be brief. I have just a statement for the good of the order. I noticed that we have had a lot of detailed individual board member questions, and I think that our agenda review is very important, because we get to hear one another's questions. But in this time, when our staff is so spread, so thin, and our district staff is out in schools helping because of our shortages that are not unique only to us, but we are feeling it, I'm wondering how much staff time is being spent on answering questions that may have already been answered or been presented to us in updates for the budget and for building maintenance? So I just, the board's job is to set policy, oversee the budget, and advocate for students and staff. And the superintendent and his staff are responsible for the day-to-day operations. So I just wanted us to give us, give that a little bit of thought. I want to just quote a sentence that comes from our policy, 1.27, which is our non-discrimination policy. "Lee County School District does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin, gender, age, disability, marital status, or genetic information in its educational programs, services, or activities, or in its hiring and employment practices." So we have had staff out at schools helping. I've heard very grateful reports from that. I did receive a couple of letters, which I did share with the board from teaching staff regarding the fact that they may not be able to stay with us because they don't have affordable housing. Their rents have been raised a lot, and so they're wondering what they're going to do next, and may have to relocate and live with family. And so I don't know where we are in our negotiations, but I know we have to pay all of our staff more. And I'm not sure how we're going to do that. I see Mr. Dodig smiling back there, but he may have the answer. And I just wanted to bring that up because... And I just wanted to bring that up, because it troubles me that we have people literally verbalizing how they feel and how worried they are about where they're going to be with their families, and how they're going to be able to stay located close enough to keep their jobs. Anyway, I attended the School Health Advisory Committee meeting on February 10, and we had a presentation from the Drug Free Coalition, that Drug House Odyssey, in its 27th year, is canceled this year for the second time, but that there is a video of that successful prevention program available for all of our schools, and we want to encourage principals to make that time available for select kids at their schools from fifth grade on up. It is Black History Month, and it's also American Heart Month, and I hope that we're all doing what we need to do to keep our hearts healthy. Heather Parker from Employee Wellness reminded employees that they can earn $75 for participating in a preventive screening, and she said that 400 participants joined the Lift Project, which is kind of a be happy, be healthy, and keep moving project. So we encourage more people to do that. There was a mental health update, and we have 27 licensed mental health therapists are hired. We have community partners on contract, but there are wait lists as we make referrals for kids and families who need help, and we are educating parents with Wellness Wednesdays. Positive Prevention, Mr. Bradley gave some update on 504 accommodations, and how they're looking for physicians to work with the school district, and how most of our schools now are participating in positive behavior, support, restorative practices, and also that the Equity Guide is in the works. The Healthy Living Collaboration, which is a contracted activity, a partnered activity with the district schools and staff, and University of Florida Family Nutrition Program, and it is blossoming. We are collecting food from many of our gardens, and helping to fight the food insufficiency. Continuous Systemic Improvement Committee gave some recommendations, and they suggest that we focus more on career in tech, comprehensive health education, and comprehensive mental health. And they suggested that we try using emergency funds, if we can, to train and assist staff in implementing and collaborating with one another, and in evaluating programs that could be used in implementing a health education program to meet some of the increasing needs in kids' mental health, kids' and families' mental health. And also, could we seek out business and community partnerships, grants, work with parks and rec, and universities? Then my favorite committee to attend is the Student Advisory Committee, and Mary Lynn Rodriguez is going to be stepping down as the district liaison, and Shelley Taylor, who does the graduations, will be taking over. They had a presentation on attendance by Tammy Scott, and they had an activity where kids had to write down the, one probing question that would encourage deeper discussion about the number of chronically absent students in Lee County, which has increased significantly the last two years. And I know that part of that is due to the pandemic, but they had a lot of good questions and many good suggestions, and one of the things they said, "Well, a lot of kids aren't coming back to school, because when they come back to school, they get penalized and put in timeout for being tardy." And that is a problem that a lot of people are experiencing because of the increase in the traffic that we have. So there was some conversation about that, and I think that the people from academic services and attendants left with some really good ideas, thanks to the students, and that's why I always say, ask the kids. They also had a presentation on quality points and grading, and had many of their questions answered. It seems like some kids were happy about it and some weren't. They were thinking maybe it would hurt their grade point averages, but actually, it aligns to the standards and is used by many districts. And Ms. Alavado and Lori Brooks did a really good job answering the kids' questions. I am pleased to be able to serve on this board, and thank my colleagues for all of their work, and especially to our staff, our parents, and our students, who continue to keep the ball rolling every day, even in the face of a lot of challenges and difficulties. Okay, so, Mr. DePree Bruno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind the board of Florida Statute 286.011, which is titled Public Meetings and Records: Public Inspection, Criminal and Civil Penalties. This is commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law. And just a reminder that all of our meetings, there are two or more board members in attendance, must be open to the public, and reasonable notice must be given. In addition, we must take minutes, and those minutes have to be promptly recorded. Any violation of this statute does result in perhaps a non-criminal infraction if it's not knowingly done. In other words, if it was an accident, it was inadvertent, there is a possibility of a $500 fine. If it's knowingly done, there's a possibility of a $500 fine, and it could also turn into a criminal offense, a second-degree misdemeanor with up to 60 days in jail. So I just want to make sure that the board is fully aware. In addition, there could be a criminal case, not a criminal, but a civil case that is also filed for an injunctive relief. If that case is filed, and the individual wins, then there could be attorney fees that are assessed. In addition, if a case is filed that is frivolous, or filed in bad faith, attorney fees can be assessed on the other party. So I just wanted to make sure that the board was fully aware of that. In addition, in 286.011, that is the policy or the statute that we use when we're doing our closed sessions. This is very important, because this particular statute includes that provision for an attorney to speak to its members, because the legislature realized that it's unfair to be able to discuss settlement and possibilities in the open. So that's why they created this particular provision of the statute, to allow attorneys to meet with their board members, to discuss settlement possibilities, as well as legal expenditures. So I just wanted to remind the board of that as well. And then two policies I wanted to remind the board of, because I do get questions about this from time to time, not only from board members, but also constituents. Board Policy 6.11, which is the Risk Management Insurance Policy, specifically says that the superintendent or designee is authorized to approve settlements up through the deductible amount. So anything that is two, like $199,999.99, under $200,000, the superintendent or designee has the absolute authority to go ahead and approve that. Anything over $200,000, that is when it comes to the board, usually through a closed session for discussion, so that we can get direction as to how the board wants to move forward with that. The other thing is, sometimes I have questions about how are these attorneys assigned or decided upon? When we have a claims case, when it is managed by our third-party claims administrator, which is Johns Eastern, they choose the attorneys. Now, they choose it with the approval of superintendent or designee or the board attorney, but they're the ones, because they have a list of attorneys that they utilize, that they have a contract with, that is at a reduced rate, so it is Johns Eastern, our claims administrator, that chooses those attorneys. And then last, I would like to get some direction from the board. I do have a contract from Neola that we have reviewed, and I would like to know from the board if they are, if you are interested in moving forward with Neola, so that way I know if I should move forward with this particular contract. They did come, and they told you what the services were. They did come and advise us to the cost, which would be $100,000, that could be paid over three years, and then the maintenance fee of five to $7,000 a year. So I just want to know from the board, is there a desire to move forward with that?
Okay. Board members interested in moving forward with Neola? Keeping our policies up to date and compliant? Okay, so that is 6-0.
Thank you very much. And then last but not least, there is a possibility that there could be a recommendation coming to the board for us, for the board, to take action on a booster club that no longer exists, but there is, the funds have not been returned to the district, so we're trying to get those funds back. If the funds don't come back, then the only other option is for us to handle that with a civil action, and I wanted to know from the board if this was something that you would be inclined to do. It's approximately $20,000 that we're trying to retrieve.
I can't answer that question. I don't know anything about anything you're talking about.
I'll hold off on that. We don't have to make a decision. I was just bringing it to your attention. We'll discuss that in the future. Thank you.
Is that it, Ms. DePree Bruno?
I believe so. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair. So just trying to answer a few of the questions I had, and many others will put into the formal documents, and some of it will even supplement what I'm going to say. First, I just wanted to give you the quick answer on Ms. Shields over at Edgewood. I just looked her up while you were talking, and she is a peer collaborative teacher, so that is a specific role, but that does involve a significant amount of coaching. That's a hybrid position, where they are there to help support and grow the quality of teachers, but also they are there, boots in the ground, they teach the kids, so that's not just a coach, it's a, but it is, it's more job embedded. But that's one of those, like how the TIF grant, when it evolved to become self-reinforcing and prioritized for schools within the budget. So Ms. Shields is a PCT, is the other term you'll hear for that. In terms of just one thing that's been brought up a few different times here today, is just about the pay, and the teachers and folks who've wanted to know the pay. So one of the ways, I just want to reiterate again, is, you know, I'm not a part of the bargaining team, that's not really how that is. One of the ways that I fully support the work of those parties coming together, so essentially, the union representation, as they are done with our district team, that they are there to, it can be a lengthy process to hear, you know, the interests of all sides involved, and it can be time-consuming, but the end, it is a process, and I always support that piece. The second thing, though, that I do, from my role to try to help in that, in some of the conversations I had in board member one-to-ones about the upcoming budget season and so forth, is that some of the recommendations that we are making are intended to drive more dollars to the very issues that you're asking about. So when, you know, we have a situation like a teacher shortage, if we have hundreds of vacancies, and we are able to, through the scheduling that we use, change that, so that we reduce 100 teacher vacancies or more, that allows for more of that money to come back. If all things were equal, that allows for the funds that would have otherwise been expended on those teacher salaries to then be reapportioned into the system. That's just a basic example of it. I read from Mike Martin, the president of FGCU, he'd sent kind of a budget introduction to all of their staff at FGCU, just to kind of orient them to the way the budget really works, and put it in layman's terms as much as possible. And one of the things that kind of struck me about that was, he was trying to orient the FGCU staff, all the personnel, to the power of what that is. And that's really what it is, is he said it pretty well, which was something, the effect of, if you reduce the number of employees that you need, then you have more money available to do things like raising salaries and so forth. So that's always an important part of the equation that we have to balance. That's why changing the systems and approaches that we use, creating more efficiency, and that means helping to raise salaries potentially for the people that do remain. And so we talk about custodians and these other groups, you know, all of that, that's a process that we go through, but just know that is, and it's not an easy fix, but it's something that we are intimately involved in. I really started that work back in November, will continue that all the way up through and working, I'm actually making sure Dr. Bernier is aware of some of the strategies and thoughtfulness we have, because there's so many things that we have to tackle. I mentioned some of our conversations about insurance, it's just so many pieces that we have to address, and so I just want to make sure I had that piece. Another thing I just want to mention, I know there was concern about the locksmith piece, so I just want to mention, you know, I know we did provide the data table that showed the year-over-year numbers, and obviously, the $10 million total jumps out at you. So just want to reiterate what that really is again. Because of our small team of in-house locksmiths, if they were to rekey entire buildings, the most they could do is two to three sites in a year. With that $10 million, the 5.6 million contract, the four, I'm sorry, the 5.6 in materials, and the 4.5 in the contractors, that served 34 sites, or roughly estimate 15,000 doors. So essentially, what you're doing is massively upscaling the amount of services you're offering as part of an upgrade project with the ADA and the Code Red, but you are, you know, that's why there's that giant dollar threshold, because you're really servicing just a ton of schools during that effort with additional contractors. It would have taken roughly 11 to 17 years for the two to three people to have done all those, and that doesn't account for all the day-to-day work and additional work that they're already doing. So I wanted, it can be confusing or putting it in there, and sometimes you put a data table there, it doesn't tell the whole story, so I want to make sure I clarified that one piece. And again, I'm not an expert, but I think Mr. Ross is gone, so he'll have to put it in writing if I screwed up on any of my explanation there. Last but not least, I did have a chance to check about the new weapons piece, and it is a jurisdiction-specific piece. I'm not going to get into any specifics about what that is, just from a security measure standpoint, but just to know, you're absolutely right about the jurisdiction-specific pieces, that is part of their, in their process of what they are, and we'll get some more information out on that. I believe those were most of the questions that I could keep track of, and certainly, if you have any others that weren't introduced today, let us know, and thank you very much.
Yes.
I just have one more thing, based on what Dr. Savage said in terms of the bargaining.
Yes.
I just want to remind the board as well, that pursuant to Florida Statute 447.501 and related statutes, that we have to be very, very careful, members have to be extremely careful not to interfere, restrain, or coerce public employees. It's extremely important that we allow the bargaining unit to do their job, because anytime that it's outside of that process, it could potentially become an unfair labor practice exposure. So we need to be extremely careful with that.
Okay, thank you. We will resume at 5:30 for student performance. Is that still on? Yes, okay. Students will be here performing at 5:30, and our action meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. Seeing no other business and hearing no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.